Good evening and welcome to the March 11th meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have roll call?
Yes, council members Brotman.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Satrian.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands by its nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Let us begin by acknowledging that we are standing on the indigenous lands of the Gabrielino Tangva people. As we gather for today's city council meeting, let's reflect on the wisdom of Gloria Anzaldua's words. What we say and what we do ultimately comes back to us, so let us own our responsibility, place it in our hands, and carry it with dignity and strength. Anzaldua's insight reminds us of the importance of accountability in our actions as leaders. Let's commit ourselves to carrying out our duties with integrity, dignity, and strength, mindful of the impact they have on our community. Together, let's work towards a brighter future where our decisions reflect the values of fairness and equality for all. Thank you.
Thank you. May we have your report?
Yes, the agenda for the March 11th, 2025 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on March 6th, 2025 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What's next?
Next are presentations and appointments. Item A, Agenda Preview for the Meetings of Tuesday, March 18th, 2025, by Assistant City Manager John Tachalian.
Thank you, Dr. Badjan. For next week, we have a Glendale Housing Authority meeting with just the approval of minutes on the agenda. We also have a special city council meeting in the afternoon. One item for Community Development, that will be an update of their three- to five-year action plan, seeking direction from council with respect to some of the elements in that. For the evening city council meeting, we have four consent items. The first will be from the Fire Department. They'll present their annual litubation program. Second will be from Community Development, I'm sorry, Community Services and Parks. That'll be seeking council's acceptance of grant funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the 2024 Continuum of Care Program. The Fire Department will ask council for their approval of an agreement between the cities of Burbank, Glendale, and Pasadena and the city of San Gabriel for the Verdugo Fire Communication Services Agreement. And the last consent item will be from Community Development, asking for approval of an amendment to the JPA between the Glendale, Burbank, Pasadena Regional Housing Trust, as well as the reappointment of Councilmember Dan Brotman for a two-year term. One action item that evening from the City Clerk's Office related to a report related to the CSW. And the last item is a hearing related to an appeal of a Planning Commission's approval for use variance at 4444 Lowell Avenue.
Thank you. I've actually received some emails from constituents noting that the preview of the agenda online is not always updated, and it doesn't showcase. I don't know who's in charge and how these go online, but it's happened, you know, several times in a row now, so I don't know if it is being read into the record why it's not just being uploaded online.
Work with the City Clerk's Office to make sure it does get updated on a regular basis.
What's next?
Next are, next is a presentation by the Greater Los Angeles County Vector Control District by General Manager Suzanne Klune.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Good evening, thank you for your time. I had a presentation. Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today. What we're trying to do for Greater Los Angeles County Vector Control District is to raise more awareness of our services that provide to the citizens of our jurisdiction, which your city is a part of, and we're just really looking to promote what it is we do. Next slide, please. We are the largest of five vector control districts in the county, and we're currently charging residents $18.97 annually for our services that pertain to mosquito control, as well as black fly and non-biting midge problems. Next slide. We are mostly concerned with vector-borne disease besides the nuisance that these insects pose to our residents. Last year, we had a really bad year with dengue. We've had locally transmitted dengue in Los Angeles County now for two years. Last year, we had three locally acquired cases in our jurisdiction and 14 in the county at large. 140 imported cases for us, which is about a quarter of all imported dengue cases for the state of California, so it's been a bad year. We also continue to be concerned with West Nile virus and St. Louis encephalitis, which are staples of the mosquito-borne disease in the area. Next slide. In order to address these problems, we present an integrated vector management program that contains surveillance, control, and educational efforts. Next slide. When I really talk about our control, I think most residents that contacted us are aware of us because they come out and we give service requests. They can call or submit a request on the website. Somebody will come out and help them look at their mosquito problem around the house, as well as our door-to-door efforts after an imported case of dengue to reduce the risk of transmission. Next slide. We also do a lot of things that are a little bit less visible, really. We treat, single specialist routes have, have, treat public sources like low flows in the flood control channels, swimming pools that have not been maintained, as well as street gutters that need treatment due to tree upheaval. Next slide. Oh, that's, we also, even less visible is our work in the, in the storm drain channels where we clear debris to make sure water flows and mosquitoes don't breed. Next slide. These are the sources that we have mapped for the city of Glendale. It's about 2,500 sources total that we know and that we treat on a regular basis. In 2024, we have made 6,000 inspections or treatments to those sources over the case, over the course of the year, trying to prevent mosquitoes from emerging. Next slide. We have the Scientific Technical Department that assists with these control measures by trapping mosquitoes, giving us mosquito counts, sorting these mosquitoes, and submitting them for testing at UC Davis for disease presence. We also pick up dead birds that residents report, so they can be tested for West Nile virus. We monitor the black fly population in the LA River. Next slide. We're really developing a new treatment method. It's called a sterile insect technique, and it's being used in fruit flies already all over Los Angeles and Buenos Aires and Riverside County, where we X-ray sterilize male mosquitoes that don't bite. We then release these male mosquitoes that don't bite, and they mate with the local females, resulting in no offspring and no additional nuisance to our residents. Next slide. This is a great program that we're piloting right now and that we're hoping to, maybe in the next years, to bring to the entire county. It results in lesser mosquito problems. It is non-chemical, no pesticide used, and it's ecologically sustainable. Next slide. We have a great outreach program that talks to your residents and all of our residents continuously. We give, we do youth education, and we give the city council presentations like the one tonight, usually more so in the summer when we have a lot of disease threat. We come to you in June or July to let your residents know. But this time, we just want to promote our presence and the services we provide. We also do traditional media as well as social media posts. Next slide, please. So I'm asking the city of Glendale and all of you honorable city members to follow us on our social media posts, to repost, so that all of your followers can see our messaging and be more aware of us. We're also hoping you will encourage your residents to visit our website and call us with service requests if they observe mosquito issues or other insect issues, so we can come out and help. And third, we really hope that our communications program can contact your PIO office, and you will be favorable for sharing our messages, perhaps in your newsletter, having us on your city marquee if you have one, or perhaps create, we can together create a tab for our services on your website. With that, I think I am open for questions. Thank you.
If my colleagues have any questions, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you for coming. I know, you know, with the rains, there's a lot of standing water that naturally, you know, occurs, and we, I tend to think that we should worry about it more in the summer, but should we worry about it now?
Yeah, we should start worrying about it. We're starting to see, it's getting warm enough in Spells that we do see some mosquito breeding. You know, it's, the swimming pools especially, as we're not quite using them yet, making sure they're not actually starting to breed mosquito larvae in small stages, so that we really won't reach out to residents. I think we should start looking around, and after every rain, it's really advisable that we go out into our yards and eliminate all standing water in flower pots or whatever else we all have accumulated in the backyard.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
All right. And I hope that is, Mr. Lorenz here? Mr. Galanian, maybe we can just have some of the communication be coordinated with our communications office.
Yeah, that would be lovely. We would really appreciate it, and if you all would want to look out for our posts and maybe share with your followers.
I have a question, Madam Mayor. One question, is, is your work and your agency only concerned with flying insects? Or do you handle other types of?
Yeah, no, for us, we're actually, we're actually really concerned with mosquitoes, specifically with black flies along the LA River and with these non-biting midges that emerge in huge numbers from debris basins and places like such.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't do road and control. There is a vector program with LA County Health Department. They have a vector section, and they will do fleas and rats and ticks and things like such.
Scorpions?
Yes, potentially, if, yeah, if there is an actual scorpion problem in large numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Who's our representative on the Vector Committee?
Stephen Riffel. He's doing a really great job. He's very engaged. Thank you for having him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item?
The next item is nominations for appointment, Najarian Garpetian, 3, 4, 2025. The nominee is Vivian Conchian for the Sustainability Commission, seat number five, replacing Werner. And that is the item.
All right.
Madam Mayor, I will move the appointment of Victor, excuse me, Vivian Conchian to the Sustainability Commission. She, of course, is a Glendale resident. She has a Bachelor's of Science in Nutrition from Cal State LA, a Master's in Public Health from UCLA, former member of the Glendale Environmental Coalition, involved in the Farm and Ranch Freedom Alliance, and she believes that Glendale has become a less and less livable city since climate efforts have accelerated over the last five years or so. She has a vested interest in seeing the city succeed, and she sees her responsibility as balancing art and commerce, the art of creating a climate-friendly city, together with the commerce of small and large businesses.
Second.
Madam Mayor, if I might, yeah. I am not going to be able to support this nomination. It's, and I want to, I want to say why. I think this will be probably, in my five years on council, the second time I have not voted yes on a Board or Commission appointment. And the basic concern I have, and I've known Ms. Conchian for many years, she was involved with the Glendale Environmental Coalition early on when we were campaigning to shift our utility to a cleaner source of energy. But somewhere in the last few years, she has come to reject the basic climate science that 97, 98% of climate atmospheric and geological scientists accept. She does not believe that it's about carbon dioxide. She's written to me that criticizing my quote-unquote "carbon is the problem-based beliefs," which she thinks are one-sided, based on one-sided studies. These are not beliefs. These are established and virtually undisputed facts. And to have somebody on the Sustainability Commission that either doesn't understand or outright rejects the fundamentals of science, I think it's very, very disturbing. So I'm not going to be able to support this nomination.
Second.
Well, I guess I, I mean, I'll make a comment before as well. I did go through my emails when I saw the name, because it reminded me of a name that I had seen that had emailed us previously. I had pulled up some petitions Ms. Conchian had signed, which also questioned our smart meters and how government is using smart meters to get into people's homes, and I, I think the content of that was, is my driving factor in not supporting this nomination. Just to make clear, we're not using smart meters to regulate or control the homes of our residents and small businesses. I mean, there was other things in that petition, but I'm just. Right.
Call the question, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
You know, honestly, I'm looking at her application. I had glanced at it. There's a couple of sentences in here that I would like clarification on. So when she says Glendale has become less and less livable city since climate efforts have accelerated over the last five-plus years or so, Mr. Najarian, do we know what she was referring to in regards to that? Like, what does that sentence mean?
I would be speculating if I were to.
It's fine. I mean, I don't want to put you in a position to, unless she specifically has commented on it in a conversation with you. Look, generally, if, I'm not going to oppose anyone who may have an opinion that may be contrary to any one of us up here. I may not agree with, I don't expect to agree with every single board member or commissioner, and I think the panel process and the nomination process is designed to have, hopefully, people that, at least the two panelists can agree on to nominate and bring forth to us. And I can understand why there would be hesitation by some colleagues to support them, but I think that, you know, the diversity of opinions is what makes dialogue richer, and hopefully, when she is on the board or commission, or she's on the Sustainability Commission, she'll bring some positive insight into some of the issues that we're facing.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Could we, let me ask a question. Could we have her come in and answer that question?
No, I think we have a motion and a second.
I asked, I didn't ask you a question.
I know, I know, but this is.
I'm asking, we have a motion and a second. I'm asking Mr. Kasakian.
You know, I'm not gonna, if I, I will tell you that if I was going to do that, I should have done it beforehand. I think the issue is before us. I think we should just move forward with the vote, and, you know, we'll see how Ms. Conchian does in her role.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Brotman.
No.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Satrian.
No. Next item?
Next are.
I have a nomination to make.
Oh, okay, please.
This is a, it's getting hot in here already. Is the AC on, Mr. City? All right. Just a joke, we got to put here and everything we do, so. This is nomination for, between myself and Mayor Mayor Satrian for Planning Commission, Mr. Eddie Minassian. I'm nominating Eddie Minassian.
Yeah, do you want to say? Okay. And Mr. Najarian and I are nominating Lilith Rosdamian for Parks and Recreation Commission. All right. Next item?
Next are consent items, including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed. Madam Mayor, we have speakers on item 4C.
All right, so.
I'll move the balance of the consent calendar.
Sorry, which item was it?
4C.
So I'll move A and B.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Brotman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Satrian.
Yes. All right, we'll take 4C.
Item 4C is public works regarding super, sub-recipient, I'm, my apologies, sub-recipient agreement between the Center for Transportation and Environment, CTE, and City of Glendale related to the California Air Resources Control Board fiscal year 2021, 2022, and fiscal year 2022, 2023, advanced technology demonstration and pilot projects for Glendale Municipal Green Zone Project. One motion authorizing the city manager or a designate to enter into and execute all agreements, amendments, certifications, and documents necessary to implement the grant funding for services related to the Glendale Municipal Green Zone Project, subject to the approval by the city attorney.
You know, I'm going to use this opportunity. I've raised this several times, but Mr. Garcia, I recognize that legally we have to put certain, like, language, like, legal language on the agenda, but if there's a way for your office to work with the clerk's office, for us to figure out a more palatable way for the public to understand what these items are, that still meet the legal requirement, and then figuring out a shorter way to read these into the record during the meetings, if it's something that you guys can look into.
We'll continue to work on it.
Thank you. All right, we have a card, I presume?
We have two cards and two callers. The first card is by Mike Mohill, followed by Beth Brooks.
Evening, Ellen, Mayor Ellen Satrian.
Welcome.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. I think this item should be pulled, bottom line. Let the public, right now, the public doesn't know about this item. It's a consent item. It's buried. It's about EV, electric vehicles, electric construction, you know? There's a new sheriff in town, and he does not believe in this stuff about electric vehicles and batteries. Gasoline is the way to go. Let's have that, let's have a public discussion on this item. Let another city be the guinea pig. Glendale doesn't have the money. You keep raising our electric and our water rates because we don't have enough money to maintain our infrastructure, and yet you want to spend money on this project as a matching fund. Let another city do this item. We don't have the money. This is one of these environmental items Mr. Brotman loves, because he's dictator Dan. He wants to tell everybody else what they should do. Well, Mr. Brotman, this is not a, this is not, this is not a dictatorship. This is democracy, and the people speak, and they will speak about you in 2026 when they vote you out of office. We've had enough of your "all my way and not your way." Bicycle lanes to bring in. So bottom line, I'm requesting this council, all we need is three votes, I believe, to pull this item and let the greater public know about it and advertise it. We don't need equipment, construction equipment, to be, have EV chargers and so forth. Gasoline has worked for many, many years, and so has diesel fuel. Thank you.
Before Mr. Mohill walks away from podium, Mr. Mohill, you've referred a couple of times up here at the podium that there's a new sheriff in town. I'd just like to ask you who, which, what sheriff, which sheriff are you referring to?
Who do you think I'm making reference to?
I asked the question.
President Donald J. Trump.
Fair enough. I mean, that's who I assumed you were. I just did not want to assume that's, I didn't want to make an assumption on your part.
And one other thing he campaigned on is to, is not the Green New Deal. It's the Green New scam.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And as Mr.
The item has been pulled. No, thank you, Mr. Mohill.
And we're going to have, I think, staff hopefully give us an explanation as to what specifically this item is, but to use that, say, electric vehicles are something that is not interesting. I'm looking at a headline from the Associated Press, "Trump is Buying a Tesla." Here are some of the harsh things he said about EVs in the past, et cetera, et cetera. So, I mean, even the president is buying an electric vehicle. So, even the president is buying an electric vehicle, the new sheriff is buying an electric vehicle, and his, the head of, and the head of his Department of Government Efficiency is a person who is the number-one seller of electric vehicles. So, I don't know what you're referring to in terms of the new sheriff's policies, but we'll take it from there. Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
Next is Beth Brooks.
I'm here to really mirror what the mayor just said, because reading, I didn't even, even just to read the item was hard, to even read the item, because, you know, to know what you're gonna be talking about, I didn't know until somebody actually posted something on Nextdoor that this was about electric vehicles, which to buy an electric vehicle for your own personal consumption is one thing, but to spend taxpayer money on electric vehicles, which also are an incredible fire danger, which would be sort of ironic that you would have an electric fire truck, terrible fire danger, as a matter of fact. I have sent you emails, I know Mr. Kasakian is looking puzzled, I have sent you emails of a evfiresafe.com, which is an Australian company that is the preeminent company that compiles data on electric vehicle dangers. Anyway, that doesn't matter. The point is, is that when you have items like this on the agenda, it's like, it's like posting advanced calculus to people, like, I'm looking like, what are you talking about? What are you gonna be voting on? What is this even about? You have to make it in proper English, in plain English, that people understand what's happening here. Oftentimes, I'll hear, "Well, the public isn't really interested, so they don't come to meetings." Maybe they don't come to meetings because they don't even know what's happening here. They don't know they should come to the meeting, or they should listen to the meeting, because they don't know what you're voting on. And this is a big issue. You're spending taxpayer money where you don't need to be spending taxpayer money on an electrified fleet. That's ridiculous. And the idea that climate change is a settled science is also ridiculous. It's based on modeling into the future, computer models. That's not fact-based. That's modeling. That's something totally different. So, you don't know what you're talking about either. You have an agenda as well. You have an agenda as well. As a matter of fact, on one email that was on Nextdoor from you, you actually said, "None of us can claim to be objective, so I won't pretend to try." Those are your words, that I read from an email. So, let's not pretend that you can be objective either.
Ms. Brooks, when did you send the email? You said that you had sent an email?
This was a long time ago. This was, oh, this was when you had a special city council meeting to buy an electric police car. So, I started to look into the dangers of, that I thought to myself, "Why are you having a special city council meeting every week? I come into you and I complain that people can't pay their rent, and you're buying an electric police car?" What was that about? Why would you spend $60,000 for an electric, and I sent you an email, but I sent it to everybody's individual email, and you can look it up, because I haven't sent you many, probably one or two, and it's there, and you'll look at the website, and you'll see the incredible dangers of these vehicles, which, as I said, to have a fire truck, a heavy, the battery would be, I don't even know how it would even move with the, with the batteries so heavy.
Our next public speaker is on air. Alex Balikian, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I will make my comments to the city council. First, I want to address the people listening, in the audience, and at home. One year ago, the city of Glendale entered into this agreement because the people supposedly agreed with it. Community outreach was supposedly done by the Glendale Environmental Coalition, of which Dan Bratman is a member. The only person who spoke about this matter last year was a board member of the Glendale Environmental Coalition. This is the very definition of an echo chamber. Clearly, no appreciable outreach was done, and I am here to do the community outreach that the city of Glendale failed to do. Now, to the city council, this entire process has been a miscarriage of public service, and I am requesting that the council members formally agenda this for separate consideration and with more public discourse. We are all watching. We are all tired of the waste and the fraud perpetuated by the city of Glendale with this vanity project, and I'm speaking on behalf of the people of Glendale who are caving in under the weight of these utility prices and are watching their city council just pile onto that crushing weight, and would much rather see you spend this money on alleviating some of their economic strain right now with their utility bills. Thank you for doing my thing, and have a good evening.
Thank you. And our next caller is Vivian Conchen. Vivian, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hi, good evening, council members and Mayor Asatrian. I'm calling also to request that you pull Agenda Item 4C and that you let the public decide. I mean, it really feels lately like we're constantly having to remind you that you need to listen to us. This is what a city council is for. It's to represent the people. I'm calling to remind you once again that you are here to serve your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final caller is Jeff Lohd. Jeff, you're on air. You have three minutes. Jeff Lohd?
Okay. I do want to clarify, because this is the second time the comment's been made. The item has been pulled. You are able to speak on the item because it's been pulled from consent. When it's pulled from consent, you have an opportunity to speak, staff has an opportunity to comment, and then we actually take a vote on it separately and can deliberate on the item. Pulling an item from consent doesn't mean it goes to the voters to decide, just for clarification purposes. So, with that...
Can I ask a question? I believe this, there's an impression that this is the first time this has come up, but I know on April, I see in the staff report, on April 20th, 2024, council authorized a resolution of appropriation for the match requirement for this grant. Most of it is paid for with a grant, but we're providing some match. Was that a consent item, or was that an action item? Do you recall?
I don't recall. Councilmember Bratman. So, it appears that more than likely was an action item, but this, this item in front of you...
That was an action item?
But this item in front of you, as presented, it's just a subrecipient agreement that allow us to get reimbursed for that portion of the grant. That's the reason why it's on consent.
Right, right. This is just so that we can get reimbursed. But we actually approved this. We approved the local match almost a year ago, sitting at a council meeting, publicly discussing it, and if it's confirmed that was an action item, it was on the regular agenda, people could come and comment. So, there's nothing, this is not the first time, this is not appearing out of thin air.
And it was part of the fleet electrification plan that was approved.
Yeah, and the other, that would be another important point. We have a fleet electrification plan. We are moving to an all-electric fleet. Whether some people object to that or not, that is the plan of the city of Glendale. That is a health and safety issue. That is an issue that has been discussed and has been voted on here and has come up to us a couple times for discussion. So, this is all part of that plan. It's consistent.
All right. Yes.
Yes, this item was discussed, I believe it was April 20th, was one of the first meetings that we had, or I had, and I voted against this item to move forward. I was told that the budget was already approved in our previous budget year, so for our city management team and our budget team, our finance team, would appreciate it if next year during budget session, items like this are kind of brought to the front of the entire budget, so we would understand what we're voting for, because budget is a very large document, and it's very difficult to go through every single page and read every single item that we have to have a local match. And local match between the cash that we have to pay in and our employee cost that was calculated was, it's about $1.1 million. It's not just a little reimbursement, but it was voted for. It's moving forward. Also, in this report, it indicates that when we purchase this, this equipment, the dump trucks and the pickup trucks or whatever, if our neighboring cities, they like to use it, we will let them use it and see if it works or not. And basically, this is on a trial basis, and we are being the first to buy these equipments and test it. And also, when we were discussing fleet electrification, I mentioned that some of these larger trucks, like dump trucks or excavators or what have you, they are, they will require a lot more power, and we were told that we're not going to purchase these, because we will wait a few years to understand if they work, how much power do they need, and how long their batteries will last, because you have to understand, when they're loaded, it's a different story. When they're not loaded, it's a different story. So, that's what I wanted to say. I'm not going to vote for this item, because I voted against it in the past. Full disclosures, I do have an EV. I do have an EV at my house, but that's a personal choice that, and that's about, that's what this is all about. People need to have a choice to purchase any kind of a car they want, to live any way they want, to use what kind of, any kind of appliances they want, and it's all about choices. I have other, we have other kinds of cars, and this year, when we had to replace one, we decided to purchase an EV, and I think my wife is very happy with it. So, that's all I have to say.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Najarian also...
I apologize. I need to make a clarification that in April of last year, this was a consent item, but it was pulled, and there was discussion that was held.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, as I understand, the entire project is $2,146,000 and change, correct, as indicated in the report? But there's a match for half of that, for $1,100,000. So, the city is paying the other half of that. Am I correct in understanding that?
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes. Councilmember Najarian, so the city's responsibility relative to a cash match is $566,790, but there's also in-kind staff...
Mr. Hernandez, your microphone.
Bring it closer.
Hello? Test? Good?
Need electricity?
Councilmember Najarian, as mentioned, the cash match for this is about $567,000, but there is in-kind, which is primarily made up of staff time, of about $507,000.
Okay. So, my criticism is, under the fiscal impact paragraph, it says there is no fiscal impact associated with this report. So, I have a problem with that. Maybe it's technically correct that this money had already been appropriated in a prior year, but when I read this, it seemed to imply that the grant covers everything. So, I was wrong in assuming that the grant covered everything. Someone help me out here.
So, Councilmember Najarian, you're right, that the staff report says that there is no fiscal impact, because the action before you is the approval of the subrecipient agreements. There's obviously a fiscal impact that was discussed in April, which outlined and is broken down by the existing appropriation table in the staff report.
Technically correct, but at the very least confusing.
It's understood, Councilmember Najarian, and it's also indicates the same section of the report that no new appropriation is needed at this time.
Right.
So, technically, no fiscal impact associated with this.
Okay. I understand.
In the future, we'll make sure it's clear.
Be a little more clear. The second point is, the outreach was conducted by the Glendale Environmental Coalition? What? Did we pay them for that? Did we pay them to do the outreach?
So, I can ask our Public Works Administrator, Shay Eccleston, who can speak on the outreach that was done for this item.
Hi, Mayor Asatrian, members of city councils. So, the outreach component is referring to the demonstration phase of this particular project, which we haven't done yet. So, once we get all four vehicles, there's gonna be a demonstration phase, and we're gonna involve our community partners.
Okay. Well, again, the report's a little bit, maybe I'm reading these reports with the wrong lens. It says the Glendale Environmental Coalition provided support for the grant application.
Correct.
Did we pay them for that?
No.
Did they spend time on that?
They provided a support letter, but again, their involvement up till now is just in the application.
Okay. And they agreed to leverage their outreach tools to raise awareness of this pilot project. Is that...
Yes, yes.
So, if they're, I have a problem, because if they're doing a favor for us, I think that imposes some sort of obligation on the city to give them a favor back. And I, at times, at times, the coalition is at odds with the city, has been at odds on certain projects, Grayson, et cetera. It worked its way out. But I have a problem with one of the advocacy groups doing the outreach for any project in any circumstance. I just don't think that's, that's not, that's not an arms-length relationship that we need to have with certain groups who advocate for the city. In a sense, they're lobbyists for their point of view, and we shouldn't be hiring them and then in another, in another situation, be dealing with them and negotiating with them. I just see something wrong with it. I see something wrong with it. I mean, if we want to argue about it, I can argue, but I'm just making a comment. I see something a little too cozy in that relationship with them.
So, Councilmember Najarian, if I can, I do want to emphasize an important point. Regardless of who we select to do the outreach, the state grant requires us to do community outreach and to work with our local stakeholders. So, that is a grant requirement.
Why didn't you go to Mr. Mohill and his support group for the outreach? And that's my point, is that you're showing favoritism to one group, and there are different points of view on this subject, granted. I don't want to get into that. This point, it's not about, is there climate change? But I just think it shows an untoward favoritism towards one group, and I don't think we should do that again in the future, in this manner. And that's it.
Okay. I don't know, we've...
Ms. Gish?
Yeah. We've descended to new lows here, I think. We're applying for a grant. One of the ways you strengthen a grant, and I think maybe one of the grant requirements was, you get community groups to weigh in. They wrote a letter. We don't pay them to write a letter. They spend some time, somebody's got to write the letter, so yeah, they spent some time. They wrote the letter and they submitted the letter. And they also offered the help with outreach when the time comes that we're doing demonstrations. I mean, that's a perfectly normal thing with a community group. You're not gonna ask a community group that's opposed to electrification, that somehow fundamentally denies the importance of getting off of fossil fuels. You're not gonna ask that group to write a letter and support, are you? I mean, it's just, this whole thing is so silly. Right now, what we're doing is we're voting on whether we can get an agreement to get reimbursed. I mean, really, you know, you're gonna vote no to not get reimbursed? Is that what's happening here? I mean, this is just the most bizarre thing I've come across, and it seems like we're just, somehow or another, there's this thing that's infected us all, and we're, and we're all now, suddenly, climate change is not real, or we don't need to electrify, or gas is good, or just because Trump is running around saying drill, drill, drill. I mean, this is nuts. So, for what it's worth, you know, I'll move the item when the time comes.
But that, that's not what I'm saying at all. First of all, it doesn't indicate that all they did was write a letter.
Well, you're being told that now.
I'm being told that now.
Yeah, yeah.
And only after I raised the point.
But that's why we have briefings.
Well, I didn't ask them if they wrote a letter or they didn't write a letter, and I just think it's, it's not appropriate. It's like having the bicycle coalition do the outreach for bike lanes. I just think that there's a bias towards that, but it's okay. And don't throw in, "I'm against climate change," Mr. Bratman. That's, you know, and I resent the fact that you say we're stupid. That's, you know, and I resent the fact that you say we're stupid to a new low. I think it's a legitimate question that I ask about who we're contacting for outreach. That's all. Nothing more.
Ask a clarification question about. So this is to get reimbursed?
This is to authorize me or designate me to enter into an agreement for reimbursement.
Yes. So have we, have we spent that $1 million? 1.1 million?
So we have, we have received two of the vehicles. The other two vehicles are on order.
So we already spent the funds?
That's.
Or this is to authorize to spend the fund on our end, too? This is the, this is the local match plus the employee time that we're voting on tonight because the vehicles are on their way?
So the reimbursement amount is what's indicated in the staff report, but yes, that is the amount that we're, we would be submitting for reimbursement.
Councilmember Garpetian, the funds have already either been spent or committed. So we've already spent funds for two vehicles.
We have already spent those funds, 1.1 million dollars. Sorry? Yeah, I know, but, no, it, yeah, but, okay. We, it wasn't indicated that you have already spent the funds and you're asking for reimbursement. That's, that's what was a little bit, but I didn't get that from this report. So we spent the money, 1.1 million dollars, half in cash, half in in-kind contribution, and whoever, the state agency or whoever was that gave us 1.1 million, we purchased the vehicles, are on their way. That's, that's what I'm hearing.
We haven't spent the staff time. We will spend the staff time as the vehicles come in and we demonstrate. There is some project management that the staff is handling right now, but the actual staff time will be spent once we start deploying the vehicles and the equipment.
And how much of, with this contract today, how much reimbursement are we getting? How much is the reimbursement amount based on this contract today?
You mean, as part of this action? Or how much are we going to be asking for reimbursement? Is that the question?
Yes.
So the total, it's approximately 608,000 that we would request in reimbursement, but we haven't submitted a reimbursement request. As a result of this action, we can then subsequently submit a reimbursement request.
All right.
I'll make the motion.
There was a motion.
It doesn't matter. Second.
Real call.
Councilmembers Brotman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yeah, I was against spending our funds, but if you're getting it back, I'll vote for it. Yes.
Katsakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Asatiran.
Yes.
Next item.
Next, our City Council and staff comments.
All right. Who'd like to go first?
After all that, I don't know if I have it in me to say anything, so. Let's just, let's just get to the brass tacks.
I have one or two things, very brief. Okay. First of all, we had a repair cafe over the weekend. I mentioned this last week. I saw one member of the audience sitting here, Rue Steve. I saw Rue at the, at the repair cafe.
Did you get your coffee?
Unfortunately, my coffee grinder, after a lengthy effort to, to save it, no.
You know, Mr. Najarian had offered to fix that. I remember this conversation when the repair cafe was coming out.
Well, the people at the repair cafe are pretty, pretty skilled, and if they can't fix it, I think it's really, it's really due for the landfill, unfortunately. It's the first one, well, I'm not sure if that's true, but most of the things I've brought there have gotten fixed. Anyway, it was a great scene, bicycle repair, you heard it last week, sewing, knife sharpening, and repairing of gizmos and gadgets and electronics, really fantastic. And I don't know, do we have any numbers? It was, it looked like it was very well-attended, but I don't know.
Yes, Councilmember.
I didn't see her. No.
She was promising to do the sewing.
Oh, okay.
Councilmember Brotman, answer your question. There were 63 attendees, 55 items were repaired, and for the first time, included four bikes.
Included four bikes. Wonderful. So it was a great event, and I want to thank staff for, you know, every quarter putting this on. It rotates to different locations, so this time it was at Brand Library. I don't know when the next one is, if we have that information, but we can announce it.
Next quarter, yeah.
We'll announce it as we get closer. That was one thing. The other thing, I was hoping staff could talk about this fire that occurred right off of the two freeway, somewhere near the sports complex, right? I could see it from my neighborhood. It looked pretty scary. But there's an interesting story, so I would hope that staff could, could get into that and tell us what happened and why.
Sure. Councilmember Brotman, Mayor of the City Council, Madam Mayor, as I noted to you, the cause of the accident incident was a Mylar balloon, a banned Mylar balloon. And I'm going to ask Scott Mellon to provide more detail and encourage and warn community members that not to use Mylar balloons or any metallic balloons of that nature because of the consequences that it could potentially have.
Absolutely. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Scott Mellon, acting general manager, Glendale Water and Power. Yes, Saturday, Monday morning, we had information sent to us that there was a fire that had started. Luckily, our Glendale Fire Department jumped on it and knocked it down pretty quickly. It only grew between quarter and a half acre. But because it was near a power pole, we got a phone call and we sent crews out to take a look. What we found was some damage at the very height of the power pole where there's exposed wire and several pieces of Mylar balloons and a couple of whole balloons down around the base of the pole. So it's pretty clear that it was a bundle of Mylar balloons that made contact with exposed wire and in the process of igniting, the Mylar hitting the exposed cable, ignited, fell to the ground, and lit up the ground underneath. There was a lot of things that we were very lucky about that morning. It was nice and cool. We had had moisture recently, and there was not a lot of dry growth, so the fire could not expand quickly. And again, the fire department was on top of it pretty quickly. I do want to emphasize, there are significant reasons why Mylar balloons are banned in Glendale. This is the most significant one. We have a few things that consistently cause outages in this city. Mylar balloons, animals, mostly squirrels, and parts of trees or palm fronds are the primary causes for outages. And as we can tell from Monday, Mylar balloons can cause fires. So really want to emphasize to the public out there that are listening, please, if you are planning on celebrating, and I know we're coming into a big celebration time, we have obviously birthdays, but graduation time, we have Easter, lots of reasons to have balloons and facilities. If you're going to do it, don't use Mylar and helium-filled, or don't use helium-filled balloons. We really appreciate that.
Thank you. And if I could just to wrap it up, just say, well, thank you, thank you. I'm proud that we were one of the first and still remain one of the few cities to have banned Mylar balloons. The problem is, the cities around us have not done so, and the balloons tend to not respect borders. So we don't know where this balloon came from. It may not have come from somebody in Glendale. But just a reminder again, you know, these, this could have been a very serious fire if it had happened when we were having those heavy winds and it was drier. So please, please, please be very careful. There are perfectly good substitutes out there when you're having a party. It doesn't need to be that metallic material.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to our Glendale Water and Power and to our firefighters who responded so quickly. Thank you.
Just a quick comment for me. My phone broke last week, and I had a new one, and.
Repair Cafe?
Sorry? That's what I'm getting to. So I, all of my calendars and the dates and times were all messed up. So I went to Repair Cafe event, but it was in the afternoon because my phone was, when the event was early in the morning, not early, 10 to 1, right? I went, I got there around 3:30. They said, no, that was this morning. I rode my bike all the way up to Brown Park where there was no Repair Cafe, and I was hoping that they can fix my old phone. But maybe next time, hopefully next time I'll be there. But the other event I attended was a quick fun event, was the Police Department's Baker Two Vegas event, taco event they had, and it was fun. We all got together, had some good food, and raised some money for our police department. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Yes.
I think many of us are aware of this, but currently, there are several elect, formerly-elected Armenian officials being detained in prison in Azerbaijan. Notable among them is Ruben Vartanyan, the former state minister of Artsakh, along with Bako Sahakian, Araikarotunian. I believe all these individuals have been in Glendale previously. Ruben Vartanyan is on a hunger strike, and he is alleging torture and violations of his right to a speedy trial during his detention. They had a hearing recently where his attorney wasn't even allowed in the country. As of a few days ago, the International Committee of the Red Cross, which had been the only organization with access to these prisoners, was ordered by the Azerbaijani government to close its local office, and they were expelled from the country. This obviously raises huge concerns for the welfare of these prisoners, and I would ask that we place on an upcoming agenda a resolution or a letter directed to the State Department, to the executive branch, and to whoever else we think might be appropriate, protesting the holding of these prisoners and the expulsion of the Red Cross and the treatment and the illegal proceedings that are being held against them.
I would support that.
I would support that as well.
That's all right.
Mayor, actually, one, two things I want to bring up is, one, a few weeks ago, I brought up the issue of debris along the 134 freeway. Mr. Hernandez, I don't know, I know you mentioned that you had reached out to Caltrans, but a number of folks, since I brought that up, have indicated that the materials are still there. They're very large. One of them is a down sign. The other one is, I guess, a screen that was used in some sort of demonstration or protest that's there. So if you can please give us an update as to when we can expect that to be removed. And also, a number of folks in the city are concerned, upset, want to know when their particular stretch of a street is going to be repaved. The recent rains have kind of accentuated the potholes in some of the parts of the city. Some folks have told me that, you know, an entire time they've lived in their neighborhood, their street hasn't been repaved once. So I'd like to ask staff to bring forth, and I know we have had this discussion before at different times, but I think it warrants it now to have another conversation about the schedule of our street maintenance and have council understand so we can answer these questions when they come up from residents, you know, as to what part of the city is going to be addressed and when. We've always taken pride, Madam Mayor, on the quality of our streets. It's one of the things that you immediately notice when you cross into Glendale from those neighboring cities that shall not be named. You realize that you are in Glendale and not in one of our adjacent cities. So we need to maintain those. Thank you.
Councilmember Katsakian, are you asking for an agenda item or are you request, because they already have a schedule?
Yes.
Or are you just requesting that?
I would like that schedule to be shared with us in this form, and so the public. And I think in the past, perhaps, it's been rolled into the budget conversations. I think it warrants perhaps to have it separated from that, or as we lead up to the budget conversation, to have one separate about the state of that schedule.
Councilmember Katsakian, Mayor of City Council, we do have a pavement management program in place that was shared with council a couple of years ago, I believe maybe three years ago, that we can update and bring forward for your information.
Well, I think it would be also helpful to get an updated schedule. I know that some residents had reached out. I had contacted Public Works to find out about their specific street. And then, you know, time, the Public Works staff had indicated when it was up, and that time came and went. It didn't happen, and then so the constituents keep reaching back out to me, saying what's going on. And so if there is change of schedule, also figuring out how we're communicating that with the constituents.
Thank you.
Which brings me to our Artsakh street project. I haven't heard much on it. I thought we should be well underway for that, and I'm not seeing anything.
Correct, Madam Mayor. That was one of the projects that unfortunately has been delayed due to a number of reasons. Initially, when the project was out to bid, because of the size and magnitude and complexity of the project, we didn't receive any bids. Public Works staff made some revisions and edits into the phasing and made some adjustments, went out to bid. They did receive three bids. Currently, they're reviewing those with the city attorney's office, and in the coming weeks, they'll bring a report in front of council with recommendations.
Okay. And then I guess my only other thing would be to say thank you to the Downtown Glendale Association for hosting the International Women's Day celebration. It was a event with great turnout and connections. And I also want to thank our Commission on the Status of Women, who partnered with Armenian Bar Association to hold a screening and have a panel discussion on issues related to domestic violence. So thank you for that. All right. Next item.
Next, our community event announcements, three minutes, five-speaker limit per mayor policy. This item also permits speakers wishing to speak under general oral communications, subject to the three-minute time limit. Discussion is limited to matters not on the agenda. Mayor Asatiran, we have five speaker cards on this item. The first speaker is Mike Mohill. Following Mike Mohill is Barbara Mosher and Tony Pasarella.
My name is Mike Mohill. Tonight, council members, I'm taking up Councilman Arvin Najarian's suggestion. I'm going to start tonight the Glendale Reasonable Environmental Coalition. Reasonable. I'm signing, I'm looking for volunteers to join my group. Councilman Vartan, excuse me, Councilman Dan Brotman uses his office. I'll use my newsletter. Anything important, we'll publish it in our newsletter. There is reasonable environmental rules and regulations in this city and the country. What Mr. Brotman is doing, he acts like a dictator as usual. Now, the reason I came here this evening, I'd like to talk about Ross Fralless in South Glendale. That building, they're going bankrupt. It's going to be empty. I'm sorry, Joanne. I keep thinking of, Joanne, I thank you already. Okay. That's a nice, big spot. We can make a nice, big, big, beautiful park. In fact, in the, in the daily news on Sunday, there was a big article called Trees Really Sucking Up Pollution, Mr. Brotman. It says this, USC study shows more fossil fuel emissions are being pulled out of the air than expected. A recent USC study shows that a city urban forest isn't just providing shade and aesthetics, it's quietly pulling more pollution out of the air than scientists realize, especially when the summer heat kicks in. In the Los Angeles neighborhood of Mid-City, researchers found that trees are removing, mind you, about 60%, 60% of the fossil fuel emission released during daylight in the spring and summer months. After the course of a year, trees absorb around 30% emission. Council, please, let's make a new park. You destroyed, this council destroyed Central Park. It's, all it is is a bunch of buildings today. We need trees for South Glendale. They're starving. Let's purchase that land. We don't need another apartment complex. We have, how many, I think we're going to be having about a couple thousand people in the next couple of years, new residents in apartments, and they'll need a green space. But there's no green space in Central Park. So let's go where, where there is going to be one in South Glendale. Trees count after. Trees count after all. And again, anybody want to join up my Reasonable Environmental Group? Sign up. I'm here.
Our next speaker is Barbara Mosher.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, and Glendale residents. I have lived in Glendale for over 60 years, which is aside from anything I need to say here tonight. I'm here to talk about the bicycle lanes. I drive around this city constantly. I'm always out and about, running errands, playing pickleball. I am out there. My kids used to play Little League. I've always been out and about. And I have to tell you, as I'm driving around, I probably see three bicycles outriding on an average per day. I am not making this up. I have been keeping my eyes open. I live in the Rancho district, and they want to take Victory Boulevard and cut it down. I don't know what the final prognosis was on that, but it's going to be cut down to traffic problems. We have enough traffic problems in this entire city and all of Los Angeles, Southern California. We do not need to add more traffic problems for the probably less than 1% of bicyclists. I live in the Rancho area, and it probably has more bicyclers on a daily basis because of its relationship to Griffith Park. And even then, it's usually on a Saturday and a Sunday. Off of Sonora, there's two lanes of traffic. One lane has a bicycle on it. That means that bicycle has the right to ride that whole lane if they choose to, which is wonderful, because cars have a choice. They can go around it. You don't need to take a lane away for the less than 1% of the people out there. I don't know who is setting up this agenda, but they are crazy. We need, you're not going to get us out of our cars. You're not going to put me on a bicycle, not even a stationary one. Give us the right to drive. Give us the right to drive our cars. Bicyclers have the right to be out there too. There's very few of them. Maybe we need more education on how to treat bicyclers. But I'm going to tell you, I was driving down a main street out in the valley, and I'm going to turn left. I'm looking ahead of me. I am watching the cars coming. I am looking for pedestrians. I start to make my turn, and this idiot on a bicycle is going in this direction, and I could have hit him. So we're not the only ones that need to be considerate. So do they. Please, listen to the residents. Listen to your constituents. They do not want these bicyclers.
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tony Passarella. You have three minutes.
Amen to that, lady. Tony Passarella, good evening, council. Public service announcement. Would you please play that video? Sound? The sound's important. It's about you. It's all about the sound. Could you stop my timing and start it over and try to fix that? Because this, my whole presentation is about the sound of this.
Reset his time. What is the thing? You don't have to be sorry.
We will, but in the meantime, I was talking to him.
Last three or four days. What I've kind of been through.
She's trying to figure out the sound, so just give it one second, please.
Yeah, yeah. I got all night. I've had an interesting last seven, eight months. I've been deplatformed in Central, where's that coming from?
It's a subsequent video. It was the video that came up after yours.
Mr. Garpetian, you know I have experience with this.
Reset his time, please.
Councilmember Garpetian, I'm in communication with our clerk. Thank you very much.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, let's go.
I don't know where you're going. I'm not going anywhere. Go ahead. Yes, please, can you reset his time? Thank you.
Okay, this is me with my analyzer, RF, radio frequency analyzer. This is on Lexington between Orange and Central, between two giant mixed-use apartments here. And what I'm finding is that it's a high-density area, the meter goes crazy. If you take it to the park, if I go to the beach, no sound, no digits on the analyzer. I do have some experience with this. I was an assistant mitigator with a guy who used to go into homes, get leads. We'd have plugins like this. We'd recommend to people, if there was sleeping, smart meters on the other side of the bedroom, we advised them to sleep other places. If the Wi-Fi router was close to their sleeping area, we would advise them to move that. So Mrs. Satrian, I disagree with you. The smart meters are gathering data, and the signatures are each, they can recognize each individual appliance, by the way. So I do have experience. I'm not, I'm not an expert, but I do have experience. There's certain signatures, sound signatures. The antenna would be like that, like a whining kind of a sound. Wi-Fi would be a rat tat 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 tat. A cordless phone would be a buzz, a bouncing buzz. Smart meter would be a click 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 click, and then a hesitate click. Cell phone, rat tat tat, whining buzz. Cordless laptop, the same. So I'm not going to have enough time, but, oh, Earth resonance, it's called the Schumann resonance of the earth, resonates at 7.83 hertz. 7.83 hertz. Your typical cellphone is 800 to 2,000 megahertz, megahertz. And 5G is, produce 30 gigahertz. It's exponentially higher. And by the way, Johnny Cochran, you know, OJ's attorney, high-profile attorney, his wife said he was on the cellphone constantly. Do you know, this was a while back, but he died of a tumor right above his ear. So this is a problem really quickly. I'm going to do a part two next week. But there is something called electrohypersensitivity. The symptoms are fatigue, headaches, dizziness, nausea, sleep problems, concentration issues, anxiety. People, if you're sleeping in your bedroom with a Wi-Fi router or a smart meter next, outside your wall, you might want to think about investigating. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alex Patrosov.
No, not this one. Good evening. I'm really hoping that we can figure something out with this event announcement portion, because I think I'm the first person to actually present an event announcement today. So I wanted to share with the community and with the council the city's efforts to raise awareness about its Vision Zero action plan. There are five community events coming up that are called Walk Audits. These are great ways for people to get engaged directly with city staff, go on a little tour of the various neighborhoods that are being showcased here, and be able to talk to staff about what, how you find the streets to be unsafe, issues that you find at intersections or along corridors, and to really get into the details about how this plan can help make our streets safer. So there's five events. You can see on the screen, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday of next week will be, or the city will be doing outreach events, Riverside Rancho, Tropical, Woodbury, Spar Heights, and Chrysena Highlands. So I encourage anybody that's interested in street safety to participate. As you know, we have a chronic problem here, as evidenced by facts, which is an adoption of the city's pedestrian master plan and local road safety plan. There's a lot of information that folks can dive deep into if you care about this topic to learn about the more chronic issues that are plaguing our city. And to Councilmember Dejarian, I'm happy to see you partner with Mike Mohill and other community partners to advocate for the BRT project, because I know that's something that's very important to you. But there are others like Walk By Glendale and the Glendale Environmental Coalition that are interested in promoting more transit in the community. So we're happy to work with you if you're willing to work with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Dr. Jackie Ish.
Well, I thought we'd talk about something that maybe we all could agree on. The flowers are coming out, the leaves are coming out of the trees, and it's starting to be spring here. And I wanted to remind you all, if you don't know about Theater Pain, they do a garden tour every year. This year, it's Saturday and Sunday, April 5th and 6th. A bunch of houses are available that you can tour to see about native plants, how to get rid of thirsty lawns. We did it a number of times and went to a bunch of these houses and really enjoyed it, and I hope you do too.
Thank you. That is all.
I do want to take this opportunity to note that March 16, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., there's going to be the Cherry Blossom Festival at the Tea House. There's also going to be a tea ceremony several times during the festival. So if you're free over the weekend, please stop by. It's a wonderful festival. Thank you. Next item?
Next are action items. Action item A, Management Services Regarding Organizational Strategic Plan, Motion to Note and File Report.
Mayor Satrian, I would like to pull this agenda off the calendar for the time being in light of the fact that we are conducting, in the midst of conducting, a community survey. And my hope and expectation is that we'll get the results back and we'll reconvene and share, obviously share it with council first, the results of that survey, and then try to match or mesh the community's priorities with councils and then redraft this strategic plan based on those priorities at a future date.
Okay. We have gotten several emails about the survey. If you can please use this opportunity just to note why some residents are getting them, some, why some are not, so there's clarity and transparency in the process.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. As you may know, we have shared with you that this is essentially a scientific survey. Not every single resident or business owner will be asked to participate. The goal of the consultant, the pollsters, are to reach to 800 respondents. Already added for one week, we have gotten some positive feedback and responses. It takes thousands and thousands of calls and texts and emails to be able to reach that representative number of the local opinion. It includes a 20-minute survey, so it's quite extensive. And like I mentioned, pollsters will analyze the responses, and they'll use statistical models to make sure that they're accurate and valid, and they'll share the results in a report to city council in the near future.
All right, thank you. Next item?
Next is Action Item B, Community Development Regarding Consideration of Development Standards and Conditional Use Permit for Drive-Thru Restaurant Facilities. One, Provide Direction to Staff as It Pertains to Potential Development Standards or Conditional Use Permit Process for Drive-Thru Facilities.
Do I have a motion? Just, I was kidding. I mean, I was hoping we would not have to rehash everything we talked about last week, but I think it's important for Mr. Calvert to do the presentation on the design procedures and the standards versus the CUP. Mr. Calvert?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I promised the presentation would be very brief, only two slides this evening. Essentially, what we were asked for was to provide a report and then to return with essentially comparisons between the development standards themselves and then the potential CUP process that was discussed before. So I'm just going to touch on a few major points and then I'm happy to answer any questions afterwards. So first, looking at development standards, the benefit behind this is very clear and objective requirements, right? We know the exact number, the exact distance, whether that's lot size or the square footage for lot size, or if it's queuing length. We know exactly what that number is. There's not a lot of discretion in there. There's not a lot of back and forth with an applicant. Applicants know exactly what they need to provide us. Remove subjectivity for the review process in those regards. Again, very clear, very well established. They do set kind of a hard line for things like queuing length, minimum lot size, distance from sensitive uses. We talked about those elements yesterday, or last week, and we had some recommended numbers in there to start with. One of the challenges here, though, is that the requirements could be too rigid. And in some cases, if we set those numbers too high, we could negatively impact good actors, maybe the small mom and pop shop that doesn't need the same kind of queuing length. But at the same time, it also can go the other way. Requirements can be challenging to modify. An example that we were discussing internally is, we never know who the next, I won't use the business name, but Burger Shop A or Chicken Shop B or Coffee Shop C may be, right? They may start off as a small mom and pop shop here, and in five years, they could be the next billion-dollar company. We just saw that recently with a local food truck that started seven years ago and they become, they were a billion-dollar sale this past couple of weeks. We could see something like that, and it's hard for us to go back and modify the requirements that were put in place. So that can be a bit of a challenge. We've seen that in terms of, you know, one of our local establishments, they went by those development standards that were in place, and they've now more than tripled their queuing length, and it's still not quite enough. So it also provides limited kind of flexibility to that contextual sensitivity, recognizing that maybe you are very close to a single-family neighborhood, maybe you're close to a sensitive use, and we don't want to see queuing there, your freeway exits, schools, things of that nature. And then when it comes to this work, it will take us about six months, if not more, to be able to do this work. Some of it has to do with the new noticing requirements, and depending on which boards, commissions that council would like us to go to. But every time we go for a hearing, it's a 20-day notice period now instead of 10. So if we go just based off of going to Planning Commission and then council, once, that's 40 days in that timeline alone just to notice. So do keep that in mind, and if we do change direction from that original discussion on a CUP, it is going to add in that extra time. For the conditional use permit, this does also work off the same baseline development standards that we were looking at before with just the development standard and not the CUP. That's kind of the floor, if you will, for us to work from. Does provide flexibility to modify those standards based on the context or changing conditions. That's what we would talk about, the conditions that would be placed on a project. We've discussed it before, that no matter what, we would request some sort of queuing analysis, traffic analysis, and then we could modify and tailor based off of that or put conditions, if you will, on that. It also does ensure compatibility. That's the, that's kind of the driving force behind a conditional use permit, is that uses that may not always be applicable in certain locations can be made a little more contextually sensitive, if you will. We're also looking at, in the original proposal, limiting the zones where drive-thrus are allowed. The other good part about it is that it does allow for a revocation, which essentially functionally can stop a business if they're not following the conditional use permit that's been granted. We can also modify it over time if the renewal period's every five years, things aren't working out the way we thought and the conditions we placed, we can either remove, add, things of that nature. Now, with that being said, councils expressed that concern here as well in the meeting, that there could be some incon- that there could be some inconsistency, right? If I retire and run off to Europe, somebody else might take my place, staff may flip over and change, they may, may apply rules differently. That is a legitimate concern. I would say that we haven't seen that with other CUPs so much, and there are appeal mechanisms. So in this case, this would be heard first by our planning hearing officer, who kind of has a first right to decline the conditions our staff has put on play, or, or put in place, but then it can be appealed up to the Planning Commission and ultimately City Council. With that being said, that obviously adds time to any application that's coming in. They have to get that hearing with the hearing officer. If they need to appeal, there's all those built-in time or, or months and weeks that go into that. That could drag out that application longer than potentially necessary compared to, say, development standards. So that's really just kind of the, the two pros-cons of each ones. Happy to answer any questions, and that concludes my presentation.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have some comments to make and some clarifications and a few directions, if you will.
Well, if, if you, if it's comments, do you want to take the public comments first?
Oh, sure, of course.
Yeah, let's do that. Because I'm sorry, I thought there was going to be questions.
No, no, no. I have questions, but I can wait. No problem.
Okay, then let's, let's take, what do we have?
Mayor, I have 14 cards and three callers at this time.
Let's do two minutes each. Thank you.
Linda Beck. Linda? You have two minutes.
I should have practiced my speed reading.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Linda Beck. So I'm here to express my concern about that drive-thru at In-N-Out that currently Acapulco occupies. I live in the neighborhood, I travel that street every single day, I use it in the morning at 5:30, there's no traffic, and then when I come home, it may take me 15 minutes to drive one mile, when it takes me 35 minutes to drive from Glendale to Cerritos. Kind of doesn't make sense to me, but anyways. Basically, to have a drive-thru there would create just significant traffic issues. It is right at the end of the freeway. I got out of my car on Saturday, I walked from the corner to the driveway where the now parking lot exists, 75 feet to the, basically to the end of the block there, it's 150 feet. That just seems ludicrous. There's traffic stacked up at the off-ramp all the time, at peak traffic periods. Just trying to imagine putting In-N-Out traffic into that lane just seems unconscionable. I don't think a worse location could have been selected if, if anybody tried. I talk to people, everybody feels the same way. Basically, we just are not happy with that, and we're asking you to please put the needs of the people before the needs of Lindsay Snyder and her burgers. Thank you.
Next is Jackie Gish. After Jackie Gish is Ru Stelf.
And if I can have the next person just come up to the first seat so we can get through this together faster. Thank you.
Let me see. Would that be Jackie?
Okay, so this is the Harvey Drive. Harvey Drive is along the bottom there, and the In-N-Out there has an 800 feet of traffic thing within its parking lot. That's about 40 cars. Next slide. This is what it looks like sometimes. It looked that way the other day when we were coming through that. It spills out onto the street. You can see a car coming towards you in the left lane there, trying to car, turn in. There's another car blocking the people coming in. So it's a real disaster anytime, most of the day, and into, well into the evening. Next slide. This is the schematic for the, the one that might go in at Pacific and Burchette. I wish I had a, so on the left-hand side is Pacific, where it says "Street" on the top is Burchette. It shows about 23 cars in line. It shows an In-N-Out, you know, driveway off of Pacific, it shows one off of Burchette. If you get the 40 or 50 cars that you get on Harvey, this is going to back up Pacific, it's going to back up the off-ramps, it's going to back up Burchette in both directions. People who live on Burchette are going to be able to get out of their driveways or out of their parking garages. It's a real disaster of a location. And last slide. So these are the questions we have. What recourse does the city have? How can we protect residential property? And can council act soon enough to prevent this project and others that might be just as problematic? Thank you.
Ru, you have two minutes. After Ru, Marty Graves, you're next.
Hi, I'm Ru Stife. Thank you for the Repair Cafe. My hand saw was fixed. Just, I think I, I feel I need to say, I do support renewable energy and an EV fleet, so not everybody's against it. I'd like to see the City Council with no name-calling. Okay, now, the drive-throughs. Today, at 11 o'clock, it took me 12 minutes to go 1.3 miles down Pacific to the freeway on ramp. 12 minutes, one mile, 1.3 miles. It's a long time. There's a drive-thru a block above. I'm just saying, no. Thank you.
Marty, you have two minutes. After Marty, Brett.
Hi, good, good evening.
Sloane Hop.
My comments are going to be, I have sent them to all of you via email, and I'm going to be, instead of my comments and feelings, I'm going to be reading a letter written by, part of a letter written by Bryant Berry, who spoke to us last week. He's not able to be here tonight, and so we are, there are going to be two of us that are going to be reading his letter. "I was the only man of color to speak at last week's council meeting concerning conditional use permits for drive-throughs in Glendale, but one of many pleading for the council to protect the sanctity of multi-generational fixed-income neighborhoods that would be irrevocably impacted. I am the literal next-door neighbor to the loan permit requestant. The council identified when asked, 'How many requests do we currently have?'" The supersized fast-food chain in question would be at the intersection of Burchette and Pacific. "The development proposal currently shows the entrance and exit of a potentially 24-hour location on a residential street, my residential street embedded up against my property. With lines that regularly, regularly reach 40 cars, 800 feet bumper-to-bumper, there is no way for my quality of life not to be negative, negatively impacted. My partner and I work extremely hard from home, putting our income back into our property and the community, both of which would be directly harmed financially with losses in property value. The health of our property and family would be harmed by added trash. Even now, we constantly have to pick up after the current dumpsters at Acapulco are emptied, which spreads debris and refuge all over our yard and the street. The effort of, the, I'm sorry, the effect of additional noise, light, and air pollution also can't be understated. It would directly cost us anywhere from thousands, if not tens of thousands of dollars, to safeguard us from this in the form of additional barriers, maintenance, soundproofing, and pest management. As a taxpayer, I don't want to subsidize a project."
Thank you, Marty. Brett, you have two minutes. After Brett, Betty McBride.
Hello, continuing the letter that was previously being read. In the meeting, I pointed out the work in Fremont Park, a block away, a project that prioritizes community, interpersonal connectivity, and quality of life. I consider it a mismanagement of public funds to invest that much into a community only to allow an outside business to undermine the returns. We are pro-new vibrant businesses in this community, but only if they serve the community. The business model of the drive-thru by nature is anti-community. The current proposal doesn't even have an interior place to sit. This turns my street into a rest stop for those passing through, not for those living here. I implore you to consider CUPs that are community-centric, classic sit-down-style restaurants and professional-service-oriented businesses like coworking spaces or apparel stores. These alternative business models pay taxes too. Unfortunately, I will be taking my father, who is a disabled veteran, at the time of today's meeting, so I cannot be there in person. I appreciate your time and consideration and want to leave you with this one question: what is worth more, the integrity of a community struggling to maintain peace they've worked their lives for, or burgers and fries? Thank you.
Betty, you have two minutes. After Betty, Alex Borstov.
Good evening, my name is Betty McBride, and I've lived on Burchette for over 50 years, so I've seen what's come and going. And the main thing really, all, if you're, you're hearing is the traffic and the pollution and the noise, and with this drive-thru situation, it'll only exacerbate the problem that we have now, but even worse, I'm on the opposite side, but there's proposal of a banquet hall on our side, on our little narrow street. So taking all of this into consideration, our quality of life is greatly disturbed, and it's like we don't count. So when you come to vote on all this, put yourself in our shoes and in our place and see how you would feel about it, and realize that this is not an adequate place to put this drive-thru or any other large thing like a banquet hall. Thank you for hearing me.
Alec, you have two minutes. Beth Brooks, you're next.
No. This one, Alec? Yeah. Good evening. I wanted to show this side plan from the Starbucks that was proposed two years ago, which is kind of what initiated the whole discussion about the moratorium. I know, Mr. Garp, that you weren't here during those discussions, so I just wanted to show this and illustrate how this, this is a problem that is systemic and not specific to the issue that we've been talking about on Pacific. This was proposed as a Starbucks on Glendale Avenue in Orange Grove. Mind you, this is just across the street from the DSP zone, so across the street, you can't have this drive-thru, but here at this location, technically, you can, even though the, the neighborhood is the same, folks would be impacted exactly the same way. And as you can see, can you go to the next slide, Arm? This is where the actual location was, right next to residential homes, not part of today's discussion, but this project was going to demolish five or six businesses and one small single-family residence. And it just kind of shows you, the, the drive-thru aspect of this really maximizes the asphalt dedication to cars on a lot and really minimizes the size of the business. And you're kind of seeing that with the In-N-Out as well. It's all about maximizing the, the number of cars that can come through that property for sales. And at this particular location, the hours of operation was going to be from 4:30 in the morning to 11:00 p.m. I don't know what In-N-Out's is going to be, but as folks that are living right next to this business, it's really inappropriate. So I support the CUP. One exception is I do ask that the city take on the traffic analysis and not have the applicant be the client for that analysis. I think it's more appropriate that the city take that on. Thank you.
Beth, you have two minutes. Lisa Morris, here after Beth.
Thanks. I guess my take on this, since the main problem with this is the traffic, so my question is, if this is a problem because it would increase the traffic, how can anybody in the City Council ever vote for a bike lane that would also increase the traffic? So I'm trying to understand the hypocrisy here of being against this, being in favor of that. You can't, you have to, you can't have it both ways. You, Mr. Brotman, you can't be in favor of bike lanes and be against this. I'm sorry, you really, really can't. I mean, you know, otherwise you have no legitimacy, which you know what I think about that, but I think in this instance, you have no legitimacy, because if this is a problem because of traffic, so are bike lanes a problem because of traffic. You're increasing traffic, which is, which is also dangerous, not just inconvenient, it's dangerous, you know, when there's an emergency. So, and, and that's regardless of what I think about, you know, I love In-N-Out, I, I love the food, but this will be, you know, a problem, obviously, but that's what I have to say about that. It's really about the hypocrisy of being against this, but being in favor of bike lanes, which also increase traffic. And I sent you the email on January 13th, and I just forwarded it to you again. Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Lisa, you have two minutes. After Lisa, Scott Gerhart.
Okay. Yeah, Lisa Morris, and so, good evening, councilmembers. Anyways, Dan, I read your newsletter, and it was very informative. I like those, and I like, hope to continue getting those. But reading it, it would seem to me that you're basically against drive-throughs. You'd rather people go in a restaurant and sit down. A lot of people can't afford that these days. Have you seen how many restaurants have closed? But the thing is, I was surprised that they can be allowed by right. I didn't know that. I do think a review should be done, so I would support having to get a CUP to make sure that the area can accommodate that traffic. And that particular one on the corner absolutely should be a no-go. So if we have to do this to be able to measure that, I would support that. Thank you.
Scott, you have...
One more thing I just wanted to say. Having a drive-thru is as American as apple pie. You're not going to get people to stop wanting to go through a drive-thru. Won't happen ever. Thank you.
Scott, you have two minutes. Amber Avines, you'll be next.
Hi, thank you, members of the council. My name is Scott Gerhart. I live at 430 Burchette Street. I came here last week, and I participated in the discussion about drive-throughs. What I sat through at one point was one of the more ridiculously convoluted and inefficient plans I've ever heard to solve a problem like this, but I'm not one to tell you I see a problem and not give you a solution. I completely understand that government has red tape, but honestly, a lot of red tape can be cut by exercising some basic common sense, which I feel is not as common these days. Take everything you have regarding tiers and distance and just get rid of it. Your CUP here, as far as operating standards goes, is real simple. If you operate a drive-thru, you have to keep the drive-thru traffic on your property, period. We're not going to tell you how much space you need, that's up to you. So as long, so as long as you keep the traffic on your property, everything's good. You don't, the first time, you get a warning. Second, you get a fine. Third, you get shut down for seven days. Fourth, 30 days. Fifth, 90 days. The sixth, your business is closed. If you have any strikes, you can go six months without a violation, the strike can be removed. All the while, this can be accomplished by a simple citizen reporting mechanism, a very simple website where any citizen can report a violation accompanied with two photographs documenting the violation. You're in violation as soon as a single car queues up completely on public property, be it a street alley or anything else owned by the city. As a business, you're allowed to take whatever steps you'd like to prevent this from happening. Personally, I'd like, I'd get a large enough property, but if you want to make one of your employees stand out there and force people along, you can do that too. But it should be your problem, not the city's. The cost for the city for this is negligible, you just need somewhere you can put up a website where citizens can report and route it to code enforcement. No need to dispatch officers unless someone is getting shut down. Create a simple, short video explaining what is and is not a violation and make the user agree that they've watched the video and knows how it works, so they're not reporting, so they are reporting real code violations under penalty of perjury, preventing bad actors from making false reports. I promise you, if a drive-thru gets out of hand, citizens absolutely will use the system. And now, the, the last part here, let's not overcomplicate it. Tonight, tonight, we need to pass something that puts a moratorium in for 30 days. It should give us enough time to at least get through this, just to prevent it from happening. And speaking of time, that's mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Amber Avines, and following Amber is Edgar Marcousian.
Hello, councilmembers. I was here last week, and I'm here again. I live within less than 500 feet of the proposed In-N-Out restaurant at Burchette and Pacific. My question is, why are we prioritizing the interests of chain fast-food restaurants and chain coffee stores over the interests of our own citizens? Nobody has come to you over the last two council meetings and, and saying, "We, we need this, this is going to make our community better, this is going to raise my property taxes, increase my quality of life." The folks at Community Development keep talking about time, we need to keep moving this time, we got, we got to get back to them on time. And as Councilmember Anajarian said last week, why can't we treat these, these businesses the same we treat as our own citizens? If you want to build a balcony, how many years does that take to get approved? This whole system of tiers, there should be, if you have this tier, this tier, and there should be a tier that says, "Stop, go no further, this is presented for public comment." This has to come to the City Council member, this has to be open for public comment, because to leave this up to the decision-makers of who might happen to hold a director position... of who might happen to hold a director position or a staff position at any given time where they can introduce their own biases and interests into that is not always going to be in the best interest of the community. We've had people showing up for two weeks here saying that this is not in the best interest of the community. Please, put the people who choose to live in this community ahead of the interests of Starbucks or McDonald's or Jack-in-the-Box or In-N-Out or any other chain that just wants to come and make business off of our community and not improve it.
Thank you. Next is Edgar Markosian. And following Edgar is Glendale Yimby.
Good evening. I already sent a previously an email to all of you regarding this matter, and I'm not going to repeat myself for the traffic issues. I live right across the street from Acapulco, and my daily commute is that. And it's not going to just affect the neighborhood. It's going to affect the people that are passing through Glendale on that freeway. It will close down the freeway. People need to get home. My suggestions for the conditional use, I believe it would be useful to put a condition that drive-throughs not to be allowed in the downtown-specific area or near any freeway for some amount of distance. I don't know. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Glendale Yimby. And following Glendale Yimby is Chanda Davitas. You have two minutes.
Hello, Mayor Satyan, council members and staff. My name is Shane Lee. I am the chapter leader for Glendale Yimby. We are a pro-housing organization. Usually, I support almost all types of development, but this one, I have to agree, it's not a good idea. Drive-throughs, they're bad for a lot of reasons. They're bad, and they discourage walking and biking while incentivizing car usage. Cars are bad, and we should encourage low-carbon methods of transportation. Drive-throughs also reduce safety. The more cars, the more likely that children or people are going to get hit. Drive-throughs also increase social isolation. People should walk to restaurants, not drive to them. If we want to make restaurants more convenient to access, we should loosen zoning standards so restaurants and retail establishments can exist in single-family neighborhoods. We should copy cities like Paris, which have lots of mixed-use zoning, which guarantees every person is a 15-minute walk away from an eating establishment. This site at where Acapulco is should be redeveloped, but there's much better ways to redevelop it. You could build a high-rise apartment with ground-floor retail. That way, we can earn sales tax while also earning millions of dollars a year in property tax from the hundred-or-so floors of apartment dwellers, depending how tall you build it. And I think the taller, the better. We should be trying to increase density, not decreasing it with a small restaurant surrounded by parking lots and drive-through lanes. The corner of Pacific and Burchett is also two blocks away from downtown Glendale, so this site is perfect for upzoning and should not be wasted supporting a drive-through. Drive-throughs are bad land use. Glendale does not have a drive-through shortage. We have a housing shortage. We are particularly lacking dense housing types like condos, high-rise apartments, 501 typologies, and even hotels for short-term residents. We do not, we, yeah. So I don't think you should build it. There's a lot better things to build. I'd love a big skyscraper that I could live in instead of a drive-through that causes traffic. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next is Chanda Davitas. And following Chanda is Alan Dish.
Hello, friends and neighbors. Like many of the people who are speaking here today, I live fairly close to this Acapulco. And I was surprised that this area was even being considered as we've all seen the madness at Harvey and the other locations. Supplanting that upon a location that's already very heavily congested right on the 134 is, it seems like, a folly. I was recently about to turn right onto Ventura from a half a block away, and it took me 15 minutes, and I couldn't understand what was happening. And it was because it was the pickup lane of a California Chicken Cafe that was backing up the entire blocks. If we do that in an area that's already full of rage due to the congestion, there will be backlash for certain. I frequent that patio at the Starbucks, and every other minute, somebody is cursing the children of the car in front of them, nailing on the horns because it's already so intensely trafficked. So I just think that it is a very bad location. I like In-N-Out. Drive-throughs have their place, but this is not the location.
Ms. Abadjan, before you take the next one, I should have said this at the beginning, but I know that Mr. Calvert also made the presentation. I do want to emphasize that the item in front of us today is not specifically on In-N-Out. We are trying to make a decision on whether or not we go through a conditional use permit or putting tiers that basically dictate how drive-throughs can be built in the city of Glendale. And so, while you can speak on the In-N-Out, and I can't stop you, I would encourage you to speak on the matter that is in front of us and tie that in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Satyan. Our next speaker is Alan Dish. You have two minutes.
Thank you, city council. Good evening. My name is Alan Dish. I do not come all the time, but I certainly grew up around this area, Pacific Corridor. Even, I read some nice history of Glendale. Pacific, I think, was one of the first, correct me if I'm wrong, one of the first north-south corridors. It's much narrower than Central, Brand. I'm not counting Glendale because it goes toward Christina Valley. So what's the issue here? Can this street handle this In-N-Out? I don't think so. There'll be headlines in Mr. Mohill's journal, "Chaos on Pacific," and so on. "Standstill traffic." In-N-Out, of course, is a staple of Californian life. My God. Drive-throughs, the ideology of convenience, even their architecture speaks to this futuristic kind of Cold War aesthetic. But, no, I don't think it's a good idea. So again, many people already stated wonderfully this dichotomy, profits versus community interest. I don't think this is in the community interest. Drive-throughs, again, very convenient. According to statistics, McDonald's makes 80% of its profits from drive-throughs and so on. During COVID, we found out, I got my shot from a drive-through. But do we need this? We don't need this. Can we handle it? Yes, we can handle it, but it won't be nice. So please, stop the project. Do what is right. And in return, I give you 15 seconds of my time. Thank you.
And with your, if I may, Mr. Alan Dish, I just noted before you spoke, we cannot dictate what goes where in the city because we currently do not have any regulations in our books to be able to say what can go where when it comes to a drive-through. The decision in front of us today will perhaps help make that decision and allow for us to decide what goes where. But we cannot speak on In-N-Out specifically, and we cannot make a decision because there's nothing in our books right now. I just wanted to clarify.
I totally understand that. Thank you for the clarification. But still, I hope you make the right decision. Thank you.
Now, we have a number of speakers on air. Brian Berry is the first one. Brian, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Thank you. And I also thank my neighbors for reading my letter, which I also sent directly to the mayor and all members of council. I support a unified CUP for drive-ins with higher standards for queues that defend the same city of residential streets. To be clear, drive-throughs can be great in the right location, but by the way, up to private residences without concessions, it's not the right location. Businesses should be required to keep drive-through traffic on their property. Last week, the council was astonished at a Starbucks with queuing lines in public alleys. We were told that nothing could be done because they inherited that deal from like other, different business. This is a time to be astonished now, and we have the opportunity to act. Lastly, to support a different requirement that the city conducts traffic analysis. Earlier, a council member expressed severe concern about favoritism. Advocates investing their own traffic in community impact is far more of a direct and insidious type of like insider trading. This is more than parking. It's more than pollution and traffic. It's about quality of life. And I think for that, we need to have a unified CUP, not a tiered one, one that sets high standards that prioritize community and, or then like the business of a drive-through specifically.
Thank you. Our next caller is Noel Almani. Noel, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Good evening, city council and mayor. Thank you so much for hearing the community concerns. I live on the corner of Burchett and Summer Works. I'm a physician assistant here at Glendale Memorial Hospital. Usually, it takes me about five minutes to get to work and approximately 20 minutes to get home due to the traffic congestion. My partner works at New York Drive-In, usually walks down Burchett every morning. And when he comes home, he almost has nearly, near misses every day with the traffic congestion during rush hour. With drive-throughs, this will only increase congestion if you get on and off the 134. It isn't safe for the community and will inhibit traffic to get to and from work. With the new theme of park renovations occurring, this will only increase harm to our children as well as the community. There's also two other drives, In-N-Outs in Glendale, and a third one is not needed. And, sorry, not In-N-Outs, but just the drive-through is not needed, especially at this intersection. Please do not allow this to pass, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next caller is Juan Avila. Juan, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Hi, thank you. I live on 426 Burchett Street, two buildings next to Acapulco. I don't think this should be allowed, the In-N-Out and the drive-through, or drive-throughs in general. I have two young girls, and I walk daily on the street. And we've been hit, you know, run over almost a few times. Like, drivers simply do not notice us or do not care. They drive recklessly. We were, the city already allowed for the other corner where the rider was for something that's already going to make the traffic way more congested. And now adding an extra In-N-Out with a drive-through is just going to be crazy. The cars are going to be idling, and that's going to pollute the air. Again, it's going to be horrible for children. I really ask that, you know, for the better interest of the community and the families that live here, to please just simply not allow this. And it's just not a good idea, considering that also we have the park in the end that already adds traffic, and it's good. But, you know, it's just too much that the street can't handle it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final caller is Raul Torres. Raul, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, council members, for taking my call. My, one of my biggest concerns is the safety of the kids that are going to be around the area because there's a high school nearby, and you know there's going to be a lot of kids that are going to be crossing the street to get there. Because, you know, because of the drive-through and In-N-Out, it's, you know, it's a pretty famous place. And you guys, if you guys live in Glendale, you know how aggressive the driving can be, especially like on Glen Oaks and the Pacific area. And, I mean, this kind of traffic can trigger a lot of road rage and stuff like that. And my concern is for the safety of the kids. But that's pretty much all I got to say on that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And that is all.
Okay. Councilmember Garpetyan?
Yes, thank you. Good question for a city attorney. If an application is submitted, and it takes time to review, goes to design review, you may go to planning commission, it gets approval through the planning, then it goes for plan check. If the permits are not ready, and the permits are not pulled, and we pass an ordinance during that time, any kind of ordinance, either it's a moratorium, it's a CUP, it's a development standard, you can enforce your new law to that applicant that does not have the permit yet. Am I correct?
Essentially, yes. Councilmember Garpetyan, the city can impose any regulation on any use as long as it has not obtained a vested right to proceed. And what the court cases say And what the court cases say is that in order to have a vested right to proceed with the rules that were in place, they had to be, you know, the permit has to be issued and the applicant has to incur substantial expenses in reliance of that permit. So absent a permit being issued, a building permit for the use, the, any, any rules adopted by the city council that are in effect, that become effective, not just adopted, become effective, can be imposed on that use.
Okay. Are we making comments or we are at the, at the questions section? I can make some comments.
I have a quick question before the comments.
Sure.
If I could. Just, just a quick question based on something somebody, one of the speakers mentioned a moratorium. Now, we had a moratorium in place for two full years. Are we able to reimpose a moratorium? I don't think so, but maybe you can address that.
Certainly. Councilmember Robyn, so what the moratorium statute says in the government code, it's just if you've adopted a moratorium and it's gone through that period and it's expired, the, the city council is authorized to not adopt a new moratorium with respect to the same subject after its expiration. So you're right. It can't.
For any particular amount of time?
I don't believe, I think it's permanently after that two-year period. I'll, I'll turn to Yvette and see if she's got any additional information.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the city council. A new set of circumstances would have to present themselves in order for the, a new moratorium to be enacted on the same subjects such as drive-throughs.
Okay. Thank you. So I just, just for the person that mentioned that, I don't think we're in a position where we can, or not, I don't think. I'm sure we're not in a position.
That would be our opinion, yes.
We're not in a position where we can impose another moratorium, although we can do these other things we're talking about. There was a question about, on the traffic analysis, who can, who hires the consultant to do traffic analysis?
Typically, the applicant will hire somebody and then submit that and then we evaluate that. In the case of this, both community development and public works would review that.
Okay. Well, maybe in my, in my comments, I'll, I'll address it because that's kind of problematic when, like, what is it, the fox guarding the hen house? I mean, you know.
In some regards, I mean, it's, it's, if you look at how we do an EIR, right? We do the RFP, we select.
We select and they pay for it.
Correct.
But in this case, they select.
Correct.
I would, I would just note, and certainly that's going to be a policy call for the council, but often with this type of analysis, what, it'll have to be performed in connection with the standards that public works has for, for the type of analysis. And then it comes to the city and as, as Scott notes, then both public works and CDD will review to make sure it's consistent with those standards. But again, you know, that'll be a council policy call.
That was it. Thanks.
Any other question? Okay, Mr. Garpetian, go ahead. What's your comment?
Okay, thank you. I just want to reemphasize that there is no application before us. We are not approving a project. We are not reviewing an application. Nothing is being considered as far as that location goes at this time. So I want to make sure, that's why I asked the city attorney the question, when the application is submitted, by the time you submit it, go through the pre-application process, go through the design process, design review board, and then building process, it's going to take at least a good year, maybe a year and a half. That's, that's what I've seen with sometimes single-family homes. Mr. Malekian, Alan Malekian is here, he can attest to that, that how long does it take to get a single-family home approved? This moratorium was placed, put in place two years ago, in more than two years ago, in 2022, September of 2022. And it, it expired in September of 2024. And lucky me, when I got elected, a couple of months later, this whole thing is before us for, for approval. And I, I wanted, I needed more time to look at all the options. I needed more time to see what's before us. And I went back and watched all of the hearings that we had in the past. And I watched the, the hearing in 2024 that I was a part of. And I also watched the meeting that we had last week. And to be honest, we did the meeting that we had last week. I, I did not like it. I did not like the way the meeting went. I'm not going to blame anyone for anything. Things happen. There's so much, so, so much information that comes from, from the staff, from the city attorneys, and we have to put them all together and understand it completely. I just didn't like the way that meeting went. And I want to do my part to make things right for the members of the community. I don't think our disagreements, I don't, I don't think I'm wrong in my position in general, but I don't want my disagreements with my, or differences of the opinion with my colleagues to end up in a decision that's going to hurt the, the members of this community. Again, two years, we had a moratorium for two years. This decision could have been made a year ago when moratorium was still in place. And it didn't get done for many, many different reasons. Probably staff was very busy, they couldn't bring all the, all the reports together, probably the consultant didn't have time to start and finish the, the traffic studies that we needed, whatever the reason was. But last week, it was, the meeting should have been about development standards, but CUP came to play. And I was kind of, I can't put this in, I was, I was told that there was a report sent to me and I didn't read my report. And when I looked at that report again, which was the, basically the report that was going to be approved in the near future, it was the wrong report, even because there's so many different reports, even staff got, the reports got mixed up and they sent the one that we already decided not to move forward with. But having said all of that, I think we had a very good briefing yesterday. And for, for the, for the clarification, the ordinance that was sent to us last week was the ordinance that had the existing businesses that they needed to get CUP as well. And we all decided that is not the right thing to do and we took it out. But the original wasn't, but nonetheless, I think we, what I like to, to do after the, the briefing that we had yesterday, it was very productive. Councilmember General and myself were there. And I think the best way to handle this, this thing, so it will be fair to everyone, is with a hybrid project. What that means is tiers three and four that have the highest generating traffic, the most intense businesses to have a CUP. So that's what I'm, I'm requesting tonight for tier three and tier four that we have the most problems with. These are the coffee shops, these are the very, very famous burger joints, whoever they are, to have a CUP like banquet halls do, like, like gas stations do, like car washes do. So, and also to have a, including in the traffic study they have to do, if they're close to an on-ramp or off-ramp, like some of the locations that I spoke to are planning, not planning, the public works director and assistant public works director. And I asked them, what is the, the good distance away from a location that will be safe to conduct a study that it may even require an EIR, it may require an EIR to see what kind of an effect that business will have on the off-ramps and on-ramps? Like in this location that everybody's been talking about tonight and the last few weeks, if you're exiting Pacific from 134 and you want to make a right, go northbound on one, on, on Pacific, and if their, their, their drive-through is spilling out or their traffic is spilling out on, on, on Pacific, you're going to back that traffic up on, on, on the off-ramp as well. So what I would like to do is a part of our conditions, if there's a CUP for tiers three and four, to have that specific traffic study done for locations that are within 600 feet or 800 feet of any off-ramp. And, and these are commercial uses, any, any commercial use, it's not just the drive-throughs that may have a, have a problem, any commercial use in, in the sites to be required to conduct that kind of traffic study.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Garpetian, you kind of lost me. Can you walk me through the tiers that you're recommending?
Yeah, there's a, in our report that was conducted by our traffic engineer that was hired by the city, they, he came up with this, this, this report, everything that I'm saying here, this is his suggestion to make sure that wrong projects will not go in the, in the residential neighborhoods. There are four tiers, this is page five of the second report that we have. Tier three and tier four. Tier three is fast food restaurants that generate significantly more trips than the rates estimated in the ITE trip generation manual. Also, tier four are coffee shops with a drive-through operation. And this is what this whole moratorium started because of a coffee shop that was going on Glendale Avenue that generates, and they're the victim of their own, own success, basically. The problem that we have is they're successful, and let's be honest, the residents of Glendale use this establishments. That's why we have traffic there. So these two tiers can have a CUP. And my question, my next question would be for our planning director and staff and maybe city attorney as to what comes next when this is implemented. Are you, are you using the development standards that we have today? And based on that, issue a CUP, deny a CUP, or make conditions on the, on a CUP application? Or you're going through, to go through a setup new standards that is going to be added to the existing ones that we have?
I'd say that you would need new standards because the current one is about two, 250 feet for a drive-through. And even a tier three or four is obviously going to need significantly higher than that. So if we are going to convert to a tier system, it would make sense to do tier one and two with a revised number in tier three and four under a CUP process if it was, if we're to, if we were to take a hybrid approach.
Right. So, I'm sorry, one more time, you mentioned tier one and two.
You would need to revise the numbers across the board. If we go to a tier system, all four tiers would need a revision because right now we just have one number for minimum drive-throughs.
One number. So in, in the, in the, in this report, it did provide the tiers, the length of the drive-throughs as well, right? So for tier one was the ones that they have very low impact, is 100 feet, for example. There are, there are different tiers and the, the highest one was 550 feet, which is 25 vehicles. And they provided that in their, in their map, in their, in their site plan. But if you have that, based on that, you can say, we will issue a conditional use permit, but it's not 550 feet, we would like an X number from you, a thousand feet, 800 feet, whatever that number is. Am I correct?
It can be conditioned higher based on the analysis that we receive.
Okay, I understand. Okay.
May I ask a follow-up question on that?
Sure.
Just because we're on the same topic. So say you have a fast food restaurant, say we, we go with this hybrid approach and you have a fast food restaurant that has a, is not, doesn't fall into tier three or four now, right? But say three, four years from now actually becomes, you know, famous enough or, you know, their business grows. We've actually, I think, seen that with Dave's Hot Chicken as an example. What happens then? What, what parameters can we put in place if it's just a tier system?
For any future locations that could move into a tier three or four for a CUP, for any existing locations, we are stuck with what we have. Because that would fall under standard development standards.
So say, you know, Ellen's, I don't know, barbecue takes off, I open one and then it takes off. And then three years from now, I have a drive-through and then there's nothing that you can do as a city to stop me?
Not for your current one. I mean, if it's backing up traffic, obvious police, obviously, police can go out there and, and issue citations or enforcement. But if it's the existing location and it fell under those development standards, that does not give you the mech, does not give us the mechanism to go back and require new conditions or changes based on the, the use, I guess, of the business.
Okay. All right. Please go ahead, continue.
So, and one other thing I wanted to ask as far as the moratorium goes, I know we cannot, and I had a lengthy discussion with my city, city attorney, and I wanted him to kind of guide me through how to ask for a, a new moratorium for a different reasons, right? So we cannot place a moratorium in, in our, in, in place, basically, for the same reasons, for drive-throughs, for drive-through lanes or what have you. But I think what I'm asking is maybe to, to look at a, a moratorium for locations that are within the 600 to 800 feet of on-ramps and off-ramps with C2 and C3 zoning that are going to propose, so we can have time to make all of this documents put together and, and make one out of this four or five different, and we will have time to make the right decision. Otherwise, you want to do it fast, that, what happens in the last two weeks is going to happen again. So I think if we can place a moratorium on, on, on locations that are C2 and C3 and they're not residential developments, they are commercial, high-intensity users that are few hundred feet away from the off-ramps and on-ramps of the freeways. So we can, we, we will understand how to come up with, with, with resolutions that will serve everyone, but yet be fair to, to everyone else. I mean, it's just, that's, that's the second, second tier of my, my comments. The first one is to have a hybrid for restaurants and drive-throughs that are very, very high traffic and we know who they are, we know which, and we have them here in Glendale. We are not reinventing the wheel. We have two or three locations, maybe two coffee shops and two fast food restaurants that are causing problems. There is a fast food restaurant across the street from the, the subject site that everybody talked about. We don't have any problems. Their, their drive-through doesn't back on the street. You go on Glen Oaks, I never seen they drive-through lanes, you know, spill over the Glen Oaks or Colorado or Broadway or Glendale Avenue. We have a several, several, or maybe a couple of high-end users that they're going to have a traffic backup one way or the other, so we want to mitigate those. And these are tier three and tier four. And this idea, again, I want to, I want to make sure that this is not only my idea. We had a discussion with staff yesterday, with council member Najarian, and this was, this was brought up. So I'm, I'm just making sure that everyone knows where I stand and I'm sure, unless my colleagues will have other comments to make.
If I might? Yeah, let me, it's an interesting idea. I want to follow up on that because I do remember a conversation, I don't remember if it was sitting here on the dais or during briefing, Mr. Calvert, where you said there were some challenges with this tiering in that, you know, it, it may be hard to distinguish and determine whether a particular restaurant is in tier one, tier two, tier three, or tier four. We can't say, you know, in and out is tier four and Starbucks is tier four. We can't do it that way, right? So how would we, and obviously a restaurant that wants to set up a drive-through will say, I'm not tier three, I'm tier two. So how do we, how does that work?
We would require a queueing analysis in order to justify what tier they fall in. And that would be looking at their existing shops, comparable locations, nearby cities, and seeing what those conditions are like and then applying that to the potential location here.
Do you think that's possible, that's doable?
It's possible, yes.
Okay.
And I actually would say that regardless, we would, whatever we move forward with here, if there is a change, that would be a staple requirement to development standards or a CUP process.
That would be a what?
It would be a kind of a staple requirement that would go into whether it's development standards or a, excuse me, CUP process, would be, provide that analysis.
Okay. So that's doable in, in theory, anyway. And now to, yeah, to the mayor's comment, you know, you could, this, this is the, this is where I have a problem with the development standards approach that we're using today. Today, we have development standards, right? They're just fairly weak.
Yeah.
But we have them, right? Now, the issue that we have is, yeah, we might, somebody might be tier two today and they become very successful, like you said, Dave's Hot Chicken or whoever. Somebody, yeah, they become extremely successful and then they're not tier two anymore, they're tier three or they're tier four. Now, I, I guess the problem I have with the whole development standard approach is once we entitle that, that project, we basically have no recourse. And, and you mentioned enforcement, and I just want to be clear, I think, I think I know the answer to this, but I want you to confirm, I want people to understand, when you talk about police coming out and enforcing, they can't enforce against the restaurant. The restaurant's not doing anything wrong. It's the person that's queuing that's blocking traffic. They can give them a ticket, right?
Correct.
So enforcement is not really, it's not a solution. We're not going to have our police waiting there, you know, every day and ticketing a bunch of cars, I don't think. I don't think that's what we want our police to be doing. So, so I, I think there, there is kind of an impression, well, can't we, if there's, there's, and somebody wrote, wrote an email about this, if there's a long queue, can't we just ticket the, the restaurant? No, we can't. Because they're doing everything that is right, right? Maybe I'm wrong, Mr. Garcia.
I would just add, it's, you know, you can cite a business or, or regulate a business that's operating as a nuisance, even if they're compliant with all laws, but still operating as a nuisance. But that bar is very high. It's a very, it's a much more challenging process to enforce against a business as opposed to, and again, this is just our experience and our opinion, we're not going to make a recommendation, as opposed to having a, a land use entitlement like a CUP that has conditions that are a little bit easier for planning, the planning department to enforce. Again, that's just based on the burden, it, the burden that the city would have to show a nuisance versus enforcing conditions on a CUP. It's a, it's a higher burden.
Okay. And I think the example of, you know, the in and out, I don't want to be beating up on in and out, we all like in and out, but the in and out on Harvey, I think you've said, Mr. Calvert, we've been trying to address that and we just don't have the toolkit to do that.
Correct. They've made modifications to try to help as much as possible, but there's only so much that can be done. 800 feet is not proven to be enough, clearly, as we saw some photos from others. And really, if you look at the site, the size, the plan, there's probably not a whole lot more that can be done at this point.
Right. Right. So that, that's.
Can I ask a follow-up to that? You, you said 800, it turns out is not enough. The analysis that you just spoke of a few minutes ago, what was the analysis for that in and out that was submitted?
I'd have to go back and take a look. I'm not sure what we received, but when that was built, it's still under the same development standards we have today, which is 200 and some feet for a queueing length. And that's what was originally placed.
So that would only, that, wouldn't that indicate that they would have to have submitted an analysis that says 275 or whatever the number is?
Not back then. That would be the updated standards that we would have to do that with. The updated standards or updated CUP process where we would be requiring this queueing analysis to be able to justify what the, what length it should be.
So, yeah, that's, I mean, look, I, I think we can all agree that the status quo is, is not working. We, we have these current standards in place and under those standards, we've approved the in and out on Harvey, we've approved the Starbucks that's on, what is it, Central and California and the other one on Glen Oaks and Grand, you know, these have all, these all passed the test. But once they're implemented, they're not working for people, they're not working for us, they're not good for the community. So I, I, that's, that's why I think the whole development standard approach, and I appreciate Mr. Garpetian, you, you, you know, being thoughtful about, you know, maybe we can do a tier system and look, I'll take what I can get. But I think that the CUP just really puts us in control, whereas a development standard...
That's what I said, CUP.
I know, I know, but, but you're only saying it for tier two, tier three and tier four.
Right. May I just make one comment, but just a follow-up? Everything that I'm talking about is based on the report that was done by our traffic engineer. And what they did was, and they say it here, the design guidelines have been developed based on field observation of 19 existing fast food restaurants and coffee shops. So they went around the city, they video recorded, they went in different days, different hours, high peak hours, low, low, low hours. So, and then this, this study was conducted by what is JB and Associates. So, and based on their observation and their reports and their numbers, they came up with this tier system. And I'd like to mention also that, yes, we have maybe two or three locations that are big problems, right? I can't, as I mentioned once before, my, my office is close to Harvey Drive. I don't get on that street when I know that I can see the lights from a mile away in, in, in their, in their parking lot. But there are 16 other restaurants, drive-through fast food restaurants that were built under the same old development standards that have no issues. Right now, the, the numbers, their addresses are here, there are different kinds from McDonald's, Burger Kings, Taco Bells, what have you, and some, some coffee shops, Star Boxes, that are in this report. And they were all built under the same development standards and we don't have any issues with them. So what I'm saying is just to be fair to everyone, so we won't banning a, a use that is very popular and it's very, not only one operator, a drive-through, what, what did that lady say, that this is as, as American as an apple pie? It is true. That's, that's how it is. So I want to make sure we have conditional use permit in high intensity users, for high intensity users, and we have the development standards that could be changed and strengthened for other two users. And that's, that's all I have. And I don't want to mix them together because I get confused, you know, when, when you bring all of them together again, I really get confused. I think this is the best way to go. And they're, if they're close to the on-ramp and off-ramp, they have to do a special traffic study and traffic engineers are sitting here, our directors. And traffic engineers are sitting here, our directors here as well. They can, they can really develop a CUP process that will make sure they address every issues that we will have in the future. And I don't want a problem used in any locations, let me put it that way. Either it's behind your house or behind my house, it doesn't matter. I don't want to wake up one morning and there's a large fast food next to my house with the, it's not just the traffic and the, and the light and the dust and the trash, it's the smell of it too. You can't get rid of that. You can regulate everything, but you cannot regulate the smell. So that's, that's another thing that I'm going to stop here, so it won't be confusing for, on my end.
No, I understand what you're, let me continue because I was, so I understand, I understand the proposal. And look, I, we need four votes to, we need to do something. The situation we have now is just unacceptable. And if we don't do something today, we will have more of these problem locations guaranteed. We will have more of these problem locations and we'll look back and we'll regret our actions. So I'll take whatever it takes to get four votes so that we do something significant. Now, I still believe that the CUP that was put before us and that we voted on is perfectly good. It leaves the control in our hands. It lets us be flexible in terms of what we approve and not approve. The plan was to get that CUP in place really as a, as a first step. And then we were going to go back to the drawing board and design some development standards that were a little, that are a little more tailored to the different tiers, right? And then use those as kind of, it's kind of a belt and suspender. So we have, we have kind of two levels of control over these. But that's what I want, I want us to have control. I want us to be able to, you know, make sure that we're not going to have these problems. And if the problems occur, that we're in a position where we can not renew a CUP or we can revoke a CUP and that, not that we want to pull somebody's permit and have them go out of business, but that gives us leverage to be able to require whatever changes are needed to make that site work. So that's, that's really, I still think, and the other thing I worry about, and I'm done after this, is that if we start monkeying with this CUP that came to us that we were, you know, we got three votes on it, we needed four, then we're talking about a very lengthy process, I think, of going back to the planning commission. I mean, we're talking months and months and months. Whereas if we adopt the CUP that was put before us not long ago, and that was during the moratorium, the moratorium was still in place at that time that we voted on that. If we adopted that, this is clean, we can, if I have some notes about how long it'll take. It'll still take a couple of months because we have to schedule, you know, the introduction and the, and the adoption, and then there's a thirty-day period until it's effective. But anyway, if we do the CUP, we can get this done in the next couple of months, right? And we're good. And then we can go back and look at development standards and we can do what we need to do with development standards. That would be my request. If I can't get four votes for that, again, I'll take what I can get.
No, it's not, I'm not trying to, you know.
Okay, I'd like to speak too.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm done. Okay, because it's kind of the old story about Nikola Tesla and Thomas Edison. So much of Edison's work was, anyway, we, I've taken this issue very seriously. I want you all to know that. I took voting for the moratorium very seriously. I'm not happy that we didn't get more work done during that moratorium to solve the issues. Let me be clear on where I stand. And if I inadvertently use the word In-N-Out, let's just say that what I mean are the large, popular, traffic generating food chains. I'm against what I've seen on Harvey Drive, what I've seen on Foothill Boulevard, with the traffic generation that has been a source of problem for traffic safety, pedestrian safety, schools are getting blocked, on-ramps are getting blocked. Let me be clear, I'm definitely against that. But I am in favor of smaller, more appropriate-sized drive-throughs. Whoever thought we could point to a McDonald's and say what an appropriate drive-through program they have? Because compared to some of these other larger ones, they are almost miniscule. I want those smaller trip generating facilities to have the opportunity and the right to determine what the standards are, as we set them, and to be able to open and operate. I, I was trying to be very creative with this, to solve this problem. I first presented staff with the concept of making very strict standards, development standards, and have the applicant that thinks they need more, apply for a variance and do it through the variance system. Staff said that's not going to work out because the variance runs with the land and it wasn't really feasible. The next idea I came up with was using the EIR process to have an EIR done focused for the traffic generation projections of these fast food drive-throughs and then impose upon them mitigation conditions which would in some way serve as a CUP. And if they violate those conditions, whatever those conditions may be, whether it's queuing length or disturbing the neighborhoods, that that could be enforced on them and that would force them to change their plan. That also was pointed out, there was a reason it didn't work out. Later, in that same meeting, the idea of a hybrid came up. And to have a CUP for the large trip generators under the ITE standards and the coffee shops, to then set the development standards reasonable or modest or conservative, whatever we decide to do, for the below-average trip generators and the average trip generators. I understand, and we were told there still might be a problem with the timing on that because it's going to involve an extra step. If we go straight for the CUP, that's ready to go and that could be done immediately. But if we're going to go back and put stricter development standards on the below-average and average trip generators, it's going to take some time. I went and I spoke to the consultant, JB Consulting, who used to be an employee of the city of Glendale. He used to be our traffic engineer, John Obagdanian. And he is employed currently with, he's independent, of course, but he does a lot of work for Chick-fil-A. And he says, in the industry of fast food designers and consultants, Chick-fil-A is a very responsible corporate citizen, that they will bend over backwards to make sure that none of their traffic flows into the streets. Whether that involves hardscaping, rerouting, or technology advancements such as going out into the line with several food order servers and getting the, getting the order and having it ready to speed up that line. Other fast food operators, who shall not be named, are terrible. We know who we're talking about, that they don't give a damn about, about impacting the community. So that's, that is, you know, the problem we have here. We've got some bad actors who are spoiling it for everybody. Coffee, you know, is one of those others, one of those coffee purveyors is a problem. Now, the issue came up and it was, well, what do we do if we, you know, someone is a new operator and we won't know how strict our standards should be on their operations in terms of queuing lines and all that? The consultant said, well, you need to look at comparable type of restaurants and get a determination as to what they are and you can apply that. But other than that, we can use our common sense. If Porto's open to drive-through, you think that would be a big trip generator? Yes. How about Din Ty Phan? Yes. How about La La Land Coffee? Yes. I don't know if you've been to La La Land, but I hear it's the bomb. Raffi's, if Raffi says we're having a drive-through, we know those businesses. And if we don't know, we could ask people. And we would say, is this business a popular business that's going to bring in a lot of traffic for which we need to set, either put them in the CUP category or in the highest level of development standard category? Yes, we can do that. Is it extra work for staff? Yes. Is staff ticked off that we just didn't do the CUP in terms of adding work to them? Yes, they are. But I think that's what we have to do. And because where we are in the process of this, we're going to need someone from the prevailing side, correct, to bring this back, to request for reconsideration, the whole process of regulating the drive-throughs, correct?
Correct, although I would say since it's on the agenda, you can do that now.
You can do that now, right. So I'm only interested in bringing this back if we have the hybrid proposal that Mr. Garpetian and I discussed at our briefing, which would be a CUP for the high users and coffee shops and development standards for the below-average and average users. So I'm not sure if that needs a motion, but I want to make sure that if it comes back, we don't say, let's do a CUP for everything, because that's not where I'm at.
Well, the staff would follow the direction given by the council. So if it was limited to that, ultimately, that's what.
Are you okay with that, Mr. Garpetian? And that other stuff you were talking about, those standards, I don't have any objection to.
Just a question for clarification. On the development standards, I assume it would be development standards for all, but the CP only for the tier three and four?
Yes.
So, okay.
I have a question. So, and I appreciate all the comments made and this very thorough discussion we're having. In regards to, and I know the consultant as well, I worked with him when he was here and I was city clerk, so I trust his work. But how thoroughly or closely, as part of his study, did he look at the Harvey Drive, drive-through?
If I'm not mistaken, that one was not used very much in the study because it was, in some regards, it's an outlier, it's one of the three maybe that we have. It's an outlier that would skew the averages, if you will, but it's also not going to allow us to accommodate.
That's kind of what we're facing here as a public as to what potentially can happen. I mean, that's, that's a little concerning that, you know, we didn't take the time to study that. And I think that's everyone's fear is that that could be replicated anywhere. And one freeway, on-ramp, off-ramp is one thing, but, you know, having that scale up to others in a city that only has so many ways of accessing the freeway is, I think, what a lot, some of the people that have written to us are concerned about. The other question I have is in terms of, you know, I understand the, I don't want to repeat same thing that other colleagues have said, I'll only say this, I'm not going to ask a question. I personally, I will put this out there, I have concerns about us trying to predict market trends and forces, which is, I think, what, you know, we can, we can predict that one of the more popular chains, if they were to come in, will have, will generate a lot of traffic at the outset. Perhaps it will level off, but for the most part, it will be at a steady stream of visitors. But there are a lot of other businesses, I think the mayor alluded to in her example of, I think, what was it, like a kebab or barbecue stand or something? That a place may not be doing a lot of business and then a product is introduced. I think Dave's Hot Chicken was one of them that was mentioned. And all of a sudden, it generates a lot of traffic. Popeye's Chicken is another example. There was this chicken sandwich craze, I don't know if people remember. As soon as, you know, they introduced it, then, you know, another chain had to introduce it and everyone was like one-upping the other one and, you know, good luck trying to make it to one of those drive-throughs at a lunch hour. It would be backed up around the block. I personally think that, and I said this last week as well, whatever tools necessary for staff to regulate and control the drive-through process so it doesn't impact residents, it doesn't spill over into residential neighborhoods, is absolutely critical. So if, you know, there's a motion today to put a moratorium in place, to have staff look at this, to bring out a more flushed-out version, I'll support it. But ultimately, I want to make sure that we are not impacting the neighborhoods. I understand that drive-throughs are as American as you name it, you know, apple pie, whatever else you want to say. I definitely have, have used a drive-through before. But there are good drive-throughs, well, there are okay drive-throughs and terrible drive-throughs. I don't think any drive-through is absolutely great. I think that all of them have their issues. I can tell you that even some of the drive-throughs of the good actors that were named right now, when you go in there, because of the serpentining of the line of cars, other visitors who actually want to dine inside can't even access the parking spots because they'll be blocked in, they can't get out because of the cars that are queued up. And the whole thing is, is just a mess. And I know that it was exasperated during COVID. Hopefully, we won't have a repeat of those times. But in general, I find them to be problematic for neighborhoods. That's all. And I wish we had done more to just study the Harvey Drive issue.
Yeah, just, just, so it looks like to get four votes here, we're going to need to go through, go to a tiered approach. I do support that because we have to do something, so whatever it is. I would just ask, I would just, I have one question and then one request. The question would be, Councilman Najarian was saying, you know, if there's a Porto's, we can't do it that way, right? That's subjective. We have to, we have to have some object, set of objective standards to determine whether they're tier one, tier two, three or four.
That's correct.
Okay, so.
But again, you'd be looking at the queuing analysis that where, as Mr. Calvert said, it would include a study of that, that particular operator's other facilities in the vicinity, so.
Okay, but they may not have other facilities or they may suddenly get pop. Okay, so we're, I guess this is what we're going to have to do to get there, to get somewhere. But I do think we're, we're still opening ourselves up to some risk. But hey, we'll deal with that later. The, the other request is, when it comes to traffic analysis, I would like my colleagues to support this. I think we should be picking the consultant, not the operator, you know? We see this all the time, we see this with historic preservation, you know? Any side can find a consultant to make a very convincing argument to support something being historic or not historic. So I don't, I don't want to get into that, I think we should pick the consultant. But otherwise, I support the idea of the tiering.
Follow-up question. Mr. Calvert, so if this passes tonight and you have a CUP that you can implement, the development standards that we have today, I mean, before it comes back and gets adopted and everything, if there is a problem or application or what have you, when the CUP is approved, the process is approved, let me, let me rephrase that. The CUP, CUP process approval and development standards have to come together? Have to be approved together? Or you can implement the CUP that if you're a tier three or tier four, you can, you can, you have to go through a CUP process? And then at that time, whatever development standard you have, based on the traffic, so everything you can implement? And then you have time to really work a development standard that, you know, goes with the, with the report and, and bring it back and we can, we can vote on it.
As we highlighted earlier tonight in the last meeting, those development standards are going to set the baseline for the CUP process. There's really no point in breaking them apart. We would be doing essentially redundant work. They should carry together at the same time because those development standards will set that premise for the CUP.
So it comes together, basically?
Okay.
I, I mean, if, well, I, yeah, so, I mean, I, I think I spoke about my position quite a bit during the last meeting, so I'll just briefly note that I'm not for a complete ban, I never was. I do think that there are some great drive-throughs and not all drive-throughs are created equal. I've pointed to the Walgreens behind Trader Joe's as one that is great. And then. And then the one on Harvey for In-N-Out, not so much. I grew up on Myrtle and Columbus. I live on Stalker and Columbus now. I avoid Pacific Avenue at all costs, to be honest with you. Especially if the schools, if it's, you know, the school's coming out. You know, add that to the freeways and then add some of the larger markets that are around that area. And so I recognize the impact that a drive-through would have in that, in that space. My hope was that we would go through just with the CUP process altogether because I feel like that that is the cleanest way to do it. There is an ordinance already written. It would have saved time and money, both for our staff as well as through our budget. But I do recognize that we need four votes. And without four votes, we can't get anything done, so, on this issue. And so I would support, I guess, the CUP and tier system. But I also recognize Mr. Calvert has quite a bit on his plate. Just looking at even the upcoming meetings. And so, Mr. Calvert, I'm gonna pose a question to you of, I also recognize that we've requested from you a while back of staffing needs to ensure that you're moving along the permitting, cleaning, cleaning up the permitting process and, you know, looking at your economic development department. And I know that item's supposed to be coming at some point. But can you tell us what you anticipate as a timeline? Because we are trying to solve a problem here that's, we all are aware is in front of us. So I don't wanna go through this motion and then have it be that we still didn't end up getting what we needed in the short term.
Some of it would depend on the direction from council tonight. Standard process that we would go, we would come back to council with the information. We'd eventually go back to the planning commission, which takes a 20-day noticing for a public hearing, then 20-day noticing to come back to council. If council wants us to go to sustainability commission at another 20 days, if you want to go to the TPC, another 20 days. So we would be looking for some of that direction. Honestly, minimum six months. I would anticipate maybe a little bit longer. If we take something off of our plate that's currently active and put that on pause for now, we could reasonably do it maybe within four months. But the only way we can do that is we have to pause something. If not, a couple of things.
Could I, I'm just asking a process. Provided the extensive conversation that we've had here. And prior to this item, it was the CUP. And prior to that, it was the moratorium. And I do wanna make a correction. There was a comment made by one of my colleagues. Staff did bring back the moratorium in time for us to make that decision back then, whether or not to extend it. Right. Well, it was, it was in, it was in time for us to make that decision. And so if, if we wanted this item to just come back to council, do we have that option procedurally?
Mayor Satrane, other than the planning commission, you could, so we, it doesn't legally have to go to the other commissions, but legally has to, it would have to go to the planning commission because it was different from what they saw previously. In addition, the development standards, I don't even think they've seen those at all. So that, that's another component of it, that it has to go to planning commission?
It has, so legally, it has to go to the planning commission?
Correct.
We can't override that?
No, it's a matter of state law. And then, and our own charter and city code. And as far as, and the other part is, depending on what direction you give it, if, for example, the council is comfortable with staff drafting development standards based on what was in last week's report, then it wouldn't necessarily have to come back to the council the first time. It could just, you can direct staff to draft it and go to planning commission and come back. I don't, you know, that could probably knock off some time. But legally, those are the, those are the steps required. Everything else is at the council's discretion.
Mr. Brotman had brought up some additional measurements during the last meeting. Mr. Calvert, in your opinion, the measurements that you had brought for the standard, or the standards last week versus what was recommended by Mr. Brotman, is there anything that's in front of us today that you would recommend differently before we proceed?
I know the council member, Brotman, had given some alternative ideas. I think actually, speaking to Mr. Garcia's point about the process, that we actually would be probably better suited coming back to council one more time just to make sure that these numbers are in the realm of, we all have a mutual common understanding of the consequences of them. That could give us a chance to create a couple alternatives that council could then preview. You know, some of the things we're gonna need to know, obviously, queuing length. We'll start with the analysis that we have now as a baseline. We'll have to use that to correlate to minimum lot size, if that's something we wanna do for the tiers. In the CUP, the zoning only was allowed in C2, C3, CH. We'd like to get some direction today on if that's what we'll go forward. But I think there's enough things in there that, that need to be studied. There's enough alternatives that probably need to be generated that we will need to come back to council first before we go to PC, just to be on the safe side.
Okay, and what kind of a timeline are you looking at?
Honestly, there's something we'd have to go and sit down and figure out. That'll take a couple of months at least to do the proper analysis, get that information in return. We have a relatively full calendar for, I know for April and likely most of May from CDD. So I'd probably anticipate maybe June-ish, early July.
Okay, and Mr. Galanian, perhaps you and Mr. Calvert can sit down and figure out which items should be pushed off? That creates that space for staff to prioritize this. And then, you know, if need be, then, you know, bring it to us. So we're also not, you know, trying to keep asking, like, where's this item? And trying to hold staff accountable when we've, we keep adding every week something new to your plate. So, okay. So.
I think there's a motion.
Mr. Calvert wanted to kind of summarize where you were, and then we put that into a motion.
Yeah, I'd like, yeah, please.
I believe, well, we, we wanna address queuing length, obviously. Four different alternatives here. To start with, the minimum lot size. Again, the zoning issue, is that something we want to restrict? C2, C3, CH was what was recommended in the CUP. Or do we wanna leave that wide open?
I think it should be wide open.
Councilmember Brotman had brought up the point of just.
What do you mean?
I think, I think there, so what Mr. Calvert said, they're prohibit, the prior ordinance prohibited them in all the zones other than C2, C3, and CH. And so the question is, do you wanna keep that as the framework? Or do you want it to be allowed in all, in all the other zones?
No, no, no.
But, yeah, okay, so only, only, okay.
C2, C3, C3 and CH. Councilmember Brotman, you had brought up a point at the last meeting about minimum distances from parks, schools, police, fire. Is that something that you would also like us to investigate as part of this process?
You can investigate, but I don't want that to be a, and it's not about this location. Let's, let's not, but I, I don't want that to be another way of banning projects. Because if you put certain distances for, from schools and churches and what have you, then there is no, it would be a very, very, very little thing left for, for anyone to do anything, so.
We're not coming back with rules on this. It's whether or not it's desired to be studied and then to see the impacts from it when we return to city council. And if that's something you would like to move forward with as part of the actual regulations?
All for new projects, right?
Right now, this is all new projects. My follow-up question would be, is there anything that you would like us to do with existing locations as part of this?
I'm not, I'm not.
I would like to.
Mr. Calvert, on any of these that you're asking, let's, let's see if there's four votes. Okay?
Count them one by one. Minimum queuing length, obviously. That's key, I'm assuming all council members, yes. Minimum lot size?
Yes.
Yes. Zoning is limited to C2, C3, and CH?
Yes.
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 Minimum distance from sensitive uses?
Yes.
Minimum distance from freeways?
Wait, did you get four on that?
Minimum distance from sensitive uses?
Yes, just to be studied.
Just to be studied? Yeah, we're, we'll come up with alternatives around that.
I'm gonna need some convincing.
Yeah. And part of it, we see how many, how much of the land in the city would be, would be eliminated if you impose.
First step is we would look at how much would be taken out. And then, nothing on existing locations? And I'm assuming minimum distance from freeway entrances, exits as well, correct?
Yeah, I did bring up one other thing, which was use of alleyways for entrance.
Is that a, something we all have?
Yes.
Use of the alleyway to allow use of the alleyway?
No, to not allow use of alleyways. Because the problem we see is the alleyways become a queuing lane. You know, so.
Just like they showed last time?
It's not allowed, but it's.
They use the alleyway to enter the facility? They can't queue into the alley in theory, but that's what happens, so.
It's typically not allowed. What happened in these cases, the, the Starbucks in Glen Oaks and the Starbucks at Central California is that the previous use allowed for it. So therefore, it's grandfathered into the next one. I think what you're looking at, Councilmember Brotman, is just to not allow that at all.
Not allow our alleys to be the queuing entry, entry?
No, the queuing lane is different than entry. It's not queuing entry way. They may enter from the alley and park and go inside. It's not that they're, they're necessarily, they always use the, the alley. Alleys are, I think it's important to, not to, it takes the, the traffic load away from the major streets if they, they're, they're, they have an entrance as well. It doesn't mean that they won't have an entrance from the main, major street. But queuing in the alley, I'm totally against it. And we have to figure out a way how to enforce it. Then that's not for tonight.
Well, yeah, it's just the question is, can we look at this as a potential development standard that we would say, for your drive-through purposes, you don't enter the property through an alley? You have to enter the property from a street.
It's something that we could analyze and we could come back with information on. What, how many, by the time we have isolated this down to where it's actually available at this point with these different changes in zones, if you look at minimum distance, that potentially gets factored in, minimum distance from freeways, does council wanna consider minimum distance from other drive-throughs? Would you like to keep some separation from these?
Let's not make it too confusing because you keep adding these new items in it and then it's, it becomes.
So that would be a no?
No.
And the intent here is for us to figure out, Councilmember Brotman, is that how many of these do we actually have left where there would still be access from an alley? I think from there, we'd be able to answer that question if we would wanna prohibit access through an alley? Or if we're just prohibiting the queuing, which is gonna naturally occur anyways? I think we'll get the answer from it through all that.
Anything else?
Is that it?
And then, CP for the tier three and tier fours. So, do you have a motion to that?
Well, one of you needs to make the motion for that.
And you got in this motion the, the fact about selecting the consultants?
Is that something we have?
For the traffic analysis.
I'm good with that.
But they pay for it.
They pay for it, but we decide who it should be.
Yeah, that's fine. We do it for others. Huh? You moved it?
No, you moved it.
I'll move it.
Look at us. Anything else? Well, we gotta.
We should have a roll call, yeah.
On, this is for the CUP?
It's all CPA and the realm.
And all, the whole thing, okay, let's go.
Councilmembers Brotman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Satrane?
Yes. All right.
This is how the salami is made.
Salami is.
Salami sausage.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. All right. Next item?
Next is Action Items See Public Works Regarding Preservation and Reuse of Former Rock Haven Sanitarium Project Adopt Plans and Specifications.
We're gonna take a five-minute recess and then start.
Thank you.
Thank you.
architects was retained in October of 2022 to assist with the project design. In August of 2024, the city council approved conceptual designs and directed proceeding with the construction documents and bidding documents, which you have before you today. The plans include a network of renovated and new walkways, ramps, and hardscape landscaping and irrigation improvements. There's going to be interior and exterior repairs to the Pine's Cottage that are identified in the plan. The proposed improvements do comply with the treatment of historical properties. Relative to the construction management services in December of last year, the RFP was issued for construction services. We did solicit the six firms, but only two submitted proposals. After an interview process, staff selected Maestro, which we believe was the most qualified, based on their extensive knowledge of historic preservation projects and their experience with similar works. They're also doing work at Fremont Park currently. So the engineering estimate for the construction phase for this project is $7 million. The remaining state grant is approximately, what we have is approximately 6.8. So the item before you, there is no impact to the approved budget. However, once we receive the bid amounts, we will then determine whether an appropriation is needed or not. At this point, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mayor, councilmembers, I'd also, if you recall, it was broken into three tiers. So when those estimates come in, we may start to scale back from that. Our hope is that we still fit into one, two, hopefully all three tiers. But we do have kind of a contingency plan related to that already.
Okay. Let's take the cards.
We have two public comments on this item. The first one is Lisa Morris. And the second one is Ellen Dish. You have three minutes.
Yes, so I might be repeating some of what you've already read from Joanne Lindkors, who wrote an email to all of you, is also published in the Glendale News Press, and I don't know where else. But you all have been at this for at least 12 years. And it was requested that the amount of preservation be done with the least amount of change. But what you are doing is, well, she wanted, pleaded with you to not allow the plans that permanently alter the interiors of the Pine Cottage. And I just want to say, I'm glad the project is finally moving forward. Everyone's waited so long for this. But you've chosen a plan that takes away four of the nine rooms. As a person who's going to see a historical place that's been in my neighborhood forever, I want to walk into it and see it as it was then. I don't want it so altered that you don't really see that. And as I understand, that one of the, because they're taking down a wall and removing four of the nine rooms, there's going to be a white space where all the artifacts are on display and cases and things like that. Why can those not be in the rooms that are already there? When you, if you would take a look at Casa Verdugo, for example, they didn't alter the insides. They've got their cases inside the rooms there. So. And also, why not build an outside restroom? They did that at the Calanina Verdugo Adobe also. And they use it as a compact park. And when we had a public meeting, one of the questions I asked is, why are you guys not listening so much to what the Friends of Rock Haven are saying? And I was told, oh, well, once the lawsuit is over, they're going to be working with them. But you're not working with them. You've gone away from their suggestions. As far as I'm concerned, the project should have final sign-off by the Friends of Rock Haven because they're intimately involved with this and has been for actually 18 years. So I don't know that anything can be done now because of what's before you, but leave it open for some redesign of the inside.
Oh, we have one more.
Thank you. We actually have a caller that just came in as well. Ellen Dish is next.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council, for allowing us to speak. I am in favor of preserving history in the city. I would love to see this property become a museum. You know, you can have a bookstore also, gift shop. Of course, work with the Friends of Rock Haven, why not? They, it was their idea, I think, to preserve this place in the beginning to get it to happen. Just to emphasize again the importance of preserving history in LA. You know, we don't like to think LA has history to avoid a misunderstanding because LA was envisioned as the city of the future and so on. Freeways and so on, space age. So the fact that we are now reflecting on history, I think, is a good sign. Second point, and now I speak with a slight joke in the fashion of Mr. Garpetian and others, like, I want to make a joke of why, why this eternal question, you know? Why did Armenians come to Glendale? No? Now, one answer that I've heard, I'm sorry if it may sound a bit tasteless, but I think it still holds. It's that there was not a good sense of identity in the city. It was too new of a city. And so why not import Armenians with their 5,000-year history or whatever? You know what I'm saying? So why am I saying this? Please, don't misunderstand me. It's because of the mantle that I think this majority Armenian council has. And Mr. Brotman, I consider you an honorary Armenian also, that the idea is, the idea is Central Park is becoming Armenian-American museum. So here, I wrote down the precise wording. What obligations should the majority Armenian council have to help preserve, let's call it, the city's pre-Armenian history? This is a step in that direction and so on. Have a good evening. You see what I got. I hope you didn't misunderstand that we should do everything possible, why not? To preserve, for example, Marilyn Monroe's mother, I think, stayed at this sanatorium. I could go on. Thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a caller, Alan Durham. You're on air. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Maryasatrian, members of the council. I'm Alan Durham. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm sorry I couldn't attend in person this evening. I would say on this issue, this is not the time to backtrack or reconsider. This, the design that's going forward has been subject to community input. I remember a community outreach meeting where the project designers and landscape designers got very favorable reaction from the community. I remember Mr. Garpetian attended that meeting. And it went to HTC, Historic Preservation Commission, where it was again presented to, I think, favorable embrace by the attendees for the most part. And then it was subsequently approved by council. And Rock Haven restoration and development into a museum and public facility has been delayed long enough. And this is not the time to reconsider a design that's already been subject to so much community input. Thank you.
That is all.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask staff, does a construction management firm have adequate experience in rehabilitating historical properties?
So I can ask our senior project manager, Mr. Arthur Asatrian, to come up to the mic. He was part of the evaluation process and that was part of the interview set of questions.
Good evening. To ask you a question, Councilmember Akasakian, yes, they do. Top of my head, I don't recall their projects that they've worked on.
But that was one of the criteria that you.
Definitely. They had at least have done three in the past five, six years.
Okay, well, all right. If they've all done, if they have had done previous work and they have experience, that's one of the things that I'm concerned about. I don't want anyone taking a sledgehammer to walls or taking things down that doesn't have the expertise to do that. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Can I ask a quick question? Which rooms are being removed? They said removing some of the walls and we're losing, one of the speakers mentioned that. And is it the shaded areas in this map?
Mayor, councilmembers, correct. I'll let Mark Berry, our deputy director of community development, speak more to this. But you can see in this graphic up here on the screen, these areas in red are the walls that would be removed. They're predominantly closets that are being taken out. One's for exhibition space, one's to create an ADA bathroom. The other one is to create essentially what we're calling a warming kitchen, if you will. It's a break room for the staff that work there, but I'll let Mark Berry explain the rest.
Okay.
Okay. Actually, I need to correct my director. That's actually the original plan that you saw back in August. We originally had, oh, thank you. We originally proposed removal of a bathroom because of the need to provide an ADA accessible bathroom. So the areas in orange, the areas in orange were the, this is the existing floor plan and the areas in orange are the areas that would be demolished as part of the original plan, which. Can you just do it manually? Just hit the next.
I think this is PDF. You have to scroll. It's not a PowerPoint slide.
So it led to this museum program. We heard a lot of feedback about removing the bathroom, observing as much as possible. And I like to say we actually responded to that because if you go to the next slide, staff and our consultants worked the building department. And we were able to keep the bathroom that was originally slated for demolition. We were able to do that by, go to the next slide. You'll see on the top, we're able to take a closet space and make that into the ADA bathroom. So I would say that this plan has very minimal intrusions. We are preserving the vast majority of the space. If we can go back to the. We're really talking about a closet, which allows two rooms to become one. That was a recommendation of our museum consultant to allow for a more flexible museum program. We're talking about removing a wall between two closets, which would become your ADA accessible bathroom. And we're talking about removing a closet within one room, which would become your warming kitchen.
Okay, thank you.
Can I follow up on that?
Of course you can. Well, actually, Mr. Najarian, sorry, Mr. Najarian.
I'm sorry.
So there's one, now the bathroom that will become an ADA, bathroom, accessible bathroom. Where is that now in this scheme we're looking at here?
Can you go to the?
Well, can you show it?
Sure. Well, it's if you.
Yeah, I get lost when we're going back.
So it's on the, it's on the top of the slide, so it's between the blue shaded room.
Unisex bathroom?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so now can we go to that other one again? Okay, so that's where you've got this wall that's coming down between a closet and a storage room.
Yes.
That's where, that's where you're going to put a new bathroom.
Yes.
So that's not a bathroom right now. Existing, in the existing space now, there are two bathrooms?
There are three bathrooms.
There are three existing. And so there will be four when you.
We'll have four total when we're finished, yes.
And the three that are existing will obviously be made functional and cleaned up and tile repaired if it's cracked and, but they will still be in their kind of original.
Yes, they'll be fully refurbished.
But they will be workable. All three will be workable?
If you go to the, back to the programming, the final slide. So the, on the left side of the slide, between the orange room and the blue room, is an existing bathroom. That will be functional. A little to the right, where you see that number two, there's two orange rooms. Again, kind of a light shaded blue, that's an existing bathroom, which will be refurbished. which will be refurbished. Those both will be functional and used. We have to hit a certain fixture count under the code. And then on the top is the new bathroom. And then to the right, there's the blue warming kitchen. And just above that, that is a show bathroom. It is functional, but we're keeping it, we're going to use it as a show bathroom. But if for some reason we needed to use it, you could use it. It'll be fully functional.
Okay. So the yellow there are the ones that will just be kind of like period rooms, essentially, right? Just for show. And the ones in orange, you're saying, will be where we're going to be able to do kind of museum-like exhibitions on Rockhaven or on kind of the general crescent of alley history or a number of things?
It could be programmed in a number of ways. But really, the yellow is to show that that would still tell the story of Rockhaven. Ultimately, we want to work with the museum operator to figure out the operation. But that's the thought process behind this programming.
So when we heard we're taking away four of the nine rooms, are we, we're not maybe taking them away as showrooms or trying to understand that?
Yeah, we're not taking them away. I think when the claim we're taking away is that we're actually repurposing the rooms. What were, what was a patient room will now be a warming kitchen. What was a patient room will now be a different type of museum program. But if you can see the plan, we're not taking anything away. We're just removing two closets and a wall between two closets, two closets and the wall between two closets. So we're talking about closet space, which is being removed.
That's the only physical alteration inside, other than fixing it up?
Yes.
So we're not losing any of that nice tile?
No.
I know there was a comment about beautiful tile in one of the bathrooms, so we're not losing any of that tile?
No, we're not. And in fact, we have Grace from ARG who will be overseeing that work. And we've already done some assessments, and our intention is to save as much as we can, as we possibly can.
Okay. I might have some questions in a minute.
Mr. Najarian, did you have questions?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
And Mr. Berry, when you say we have a consultant, someone who's guiding us, someone who's, this isn't the city staff that's making these decisions unilaterally, right? There's been work done to figure out what rooms for what type of use?
Yeah, there was a collaboration. We have SWA, who's our lead design, ARG, who's Historic Preservation. Is their specialty. We have our own in-house historic preservation staff. And we have, we had MGMP, which was a museum consultant.
Thank you. And are these being, are these being done with any input from our Historical Preservation Commission? Are they in communication with the Friends of Rockhaven?
In terms of the Historic Preservation Commission's communications with Rockhaven, I can't speak on that. But this, this plan was presented to the Historic Preservation Commission in July of 2024.
As is being presented to us.
Yes. Well, actually, with the one bathroom you demolished, we did not go back to them with this plan because we figured it was an improvement. Again, we're doing less changes to the building, which...
Got it. Okay. All right. Thank you.
And if I could follow up on that, did they, did they vote to approve or not? Was it that kind of thing? Or was it just a report?
It was a recommendation, and it was a recommendation for approval. It was a long conversation. They had questions about the future of Rockhaven, but the actual plan, it was, that recommendation was presented back in August when we brought this plan to the council.
But they were okay with the plan that you presented?
There was a consensus. I mean, there was some dissenting voices, but the consensus was approving the plan.
Okay, okay.
And it had to do more with the state grant and whether it should be used for preservation of, or actually maintenance of the buildings rather than the site improvements. It was kind of off topic, but the actual plan we presented, HPC did provide a recommendation.
All right. I don't have any questions.
Okay, I have a few comments when we're all ready.
We're ready.
Okay. A couple of comments. One of them is about, there's been a question that's come up multiple times about having a bathroom outside. And you said, I know at a previous meeting, well, the courtyard, you know, when, when there's an event in the courtyard or when people are, you know, there, the museum will be open because it'll be one, one person or group doing all the programming. But I, but I think we should be thinking about, you know, once the grounds, once we finish the landscape and people can walk about, we're going to want the site to be open, probably at times when the pines, building itself is not open, right? So I think we are going to, and I'm not saying, don't do what we're saying we're doing in the pines. I actually, I do support it. I think it's, I think it's the lightest possible touch to accomplish the goals that we want. But I think we are going to have to plan for some facility so that it can be a park. I mean, we haven't always used the word park, but we've said we want to make it a publicly available space. And that means we want people to go, and the museum might not be open. So I hope we can work on that so that by the time, I know it's a long time, but by the time we're ready to open the gates, let people in, and, you know, we have a place for people to go. That would be one, one comment.
And Councilmember Brotman, I would just say to that, there's obviously a lot more work to do. There's plenty of other buildings on the site. And part of that's going to be us figuring out what those uses will be. And that may be an appropriate time for us to figure out if any of these existing buildings can conserve that function, or maybe there's a location on site we would need to construct those. Because you're correct, those grounds could be open at a time when the museum's not, and we would need those facilities. I would say with this grant, this scope, it would be beyond our abilities at this point in time, but definitely something to factor in as we move forward with the other structures.
Right. Okay. So that was my main thing. The other thing I just wanted to mention, as I was looking at the numbers, the dollars that are involved here. So we're looking at about $7 million for this, right? We have, I think you said in the report, six and a half million left under the grant, right? So that's about half a million that is going to have to come from somewhere. And I'm guessing it's going to come from the general fund or unless there's some other magical pot of money. I know, and you haven't talked about it now, but I know there's the tier two and tier three where you're finishing the landscaping and then the hardscape to get to all the remaining buildings, right? And in the report, it said that's another $850,000, give or take. I know right now, you know, you don't know for sure. But $850,000 plus, you know, plus the money to make up the gap here on this phase one or tier one, plus some of the other work. I know we're doing a little bit of work on some of the other buildings, their facade, dealing with the exposed wood and some of the other things. Like, we're probably talking at least a million and a half. And the way things normally go, maybe closer to $2 million. So I do want, I want the public to understand, you know, there's, I mean, we're going to do this work. We haven't appropriated the money yet, but I think we realize that this is going to cost us a bit more. But we want to do, we want to do this, right? We want to get this right. We want to get it done. We want it to be like a centerpiece for the area. And the last thing I'll say is, you know, I really appreciate Friends of Rockhaven and their commitment to this all these years. I want to, you know, give them a shout out. I know we had a lawsuit. Things were difficult. It was unfortunate. We both wasted money. I think it was unnecessary. But it's behind us. We really need each other. And I hope that as we go forward, they're really, you know, an integral part of, of the life of this site as we get into the next phases. So that's, that's all I have.
Does anyone else want to make any comments?
I'll just make a brief comment and maybe as a follow-up to Mr. Brotman's concerns, maybe, or issues with funding. I know as part of the request that came from different departments that we sent over to the state included a funding request for Rockhaven. I just looked it up. The amount that was requested was 27 million as a, as a whole. But yeah, I don't know where that, I don't know who came up with that number. But I think it would be, I mean, obviously, like, we put that out there as like, this is how much we would actually need for the whole project. But if there's a certain smaller amount to close gaps, I think it would be beneficial for staff to, you know, to do as a follow-up to our state legislators, say, hey, you know, if there's grant opportunities or funding opportunities for, say, a million bucks or 2 million or whatever we need in the short term, you know, let's do that. And Mr. Kalanian, I think, you know, I had sent an email requesting a follow-up with our lobbyist on those items because I know that, like, time is passing. And I want to make sure that we're not just applying for the state, but federal, and especially since they've given in the past, they love giving funding to projects that they funded before, see it to completion. So, all right. Mr. Garpetyan, you want to make the motion?
Yes. If there are no other comments, I'll make the motion to move this item.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Brotman?
Yes.
Garpetyan?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mary Satrian? Yes. Next item?
Next item are hearings. Item A, Community Development, regarding appeal of Design Review Board's approval of DRB case number PDR 002532-2023, located at the 1,000 Sandringham Drive for the construction of a new two-story, 5,067-square-foot, single-family dwelling with an attached three-car garage on a vacant 31,290 square feet lot located in the R1R Far District 3 Zone, continued from February 11, 2025. One motion to sustain the Design Review Board's decision of April 25, 2024, to approve the project with conditions. Two motion to continue the matter directing the city attorney to draft findings reversing the Design Review Board's decision and denying the project.
Madam Mayor, as I did last time, I will be recusing myself from consideration of this item due to an interest in real estate that's just in the gray area. It's 500 and 12 feet or something like that from the proposed property. So I will be stepping out if you would excuse me.
Don't leave us.
Don't leave us.
All right.
So I'm not sure if staff has a report, but I would note that I think the only, Madam Satrian, you were not present for the hearing. So unless, if you watched the proceedings, then you can participate.
I did not, and I was just made aware of this. So I'm going to recuse myself as well. I literally just got a text message saying that I can't participate. I mean, if I was told, because I didn't watch the previous hearing.
There's a rule that says he or she who decides must hear. So, and I didn't think about it. I apologize. I didn't think about it because we didn't have briefings on this matter. And so just, I just thought about it as we were getting ready for the hearing.
Okay.
All right, well, okay.
I mean, the council, I mean, I think there might even be a request to continue. The council could continue it and get, you know, allow the mayor to watch the proceedings or make a decision.
I was hoping that this item, we have very heavy agendas coming up. And I think that's a bad precedent for things that have already been scheduled for them to be continued. So I would have hoped that this, I'm not interested in holding it up for me to watch it.
Who is pro, are you pro temp?
No, Najarian's pro temp. So what happens now?
Whoever's the pro temp next month, which would be...
Me?
Congratulations. You've been selected.
Okay, wow. Okay. Well, then let me, well, this is a hearing. Should we reopen the hearing or is it?
Yeah, it should be reopened.
Okay, so we'll reopen the hearing 9:45 PM.
No one take restroom breaks. We'll lose quorum. Let's just...
So now, my understanding is that Mr. Malikian, who is the architect for the owner, and folks from the, I don't know, AFC Arroyo Verde, Arroyo, no, AFC, Arroyo Foothills Conservancy have been talking. And my understanding, I hope this is right, but I do have an email saying that there's been kind of general agreement on a series of conditions. So I would, I guess, like to hear from both sides to confirm that here in front of us, what those conditions are, and just to make sure we're all on the same page. And then my question simply is, what happens now if they have, if they're in general agreement? Is this something that we can bless and have go to staff to work out any, any final details? Or does it need to come back to us again? I guess, my preference, probably all of our preferences, that it doesn't need to come back again. But...
I think it all depend on, it all depend on what the conditions would be and whether we can...
If the change is significant enough, it may need to. If not, and obviously you'll hear the points this evening, it would not need to come back. And the staff will work it out the rest of the way with the applicant.
So let's see. How do we do this? We have the appellant first, or we have the applicant?
I think now at this point, since either it's, they've apparently talked, maybe you can invite either one up to speak.
Well, let me, okay, this is Mr. Smee, who is the appellate. Maybe he can give his understanding of what the conditions are, and then we'll invite Mr. Malikian to come up and see if we're all on the same page. And, yes, do we have public comments?
We do, but I wanted to ask, how much time would you like?
Okay, yes, for...
Let me just add, I mean, the hearing was continued to today's date. You can certainly, you don't have to let people speak on the entire project again, but maybe the people can speak on just what's being discussed by the applicant and appellant. But you're not required to give the full three minutes as you did last time.
Okay. But let's, let's say, Mr. Smee, you, and I know you have your, you have an architect here, and you have a representative from AFC here. Is that right?
On the phone, maybe.
Okay. But is 10 minutes okay for you guys? Yeah, okay. And then Mr. Malikian will give you equal time, of course. Okay.
Okay. So thank you for your time again, councilmembers. I'm Christopher Smee, resident of Glendale, and I lead the Friends of Sunshine Community Group, which does habitat restoration at the Sunshine Preserve, which is land neighboring property to Sandringham Drive, which is why I have an interest in the matter. And Sunshine Preserve is owned by Arroyo's and Foothills Conservancy. So just to clear who I am and where that link is. You asked last month to, for AFC and the owner slash their representative architect to come together to see if there was a way that we can jointly mitigate the issues, which was ultimately about finding a way to make the wildlife corridor that already exists on this piece of land still operate in some way that is successful for the wildlife in the area. So with that, we have passed you some materials. I apologize that I don't have it on screen. But I passed you some materials that the architect Hunter Knight is going to explain to you. And hopefully, what you're looking at there is something that both sides are in agreement to. And if you've got any questions about it, you can ask Hunter after he's given you a brief summary of what it involves. Is that okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name's Hunter Knight. I'm the architect with AFC. So what you have before you is really the culmination of some coordination of mitigation measures that I've been working with Alan with, Mr. Malikian. So the first page is kind of a draft of our agreed sort of formal ideas about what we'd like to mitigate. And then the sort of middle portion, the 11 by 17s, are sort of a presentation. And maybe I can run through that. I think that might kind of clear up kind of our intent in preserving this wildlife corridor. So in red on the first page in the aerial, you can kind of see the outline of the existing property. And then there's a, there's a dashed line that traces through it. And that's, that's really the demarcation of the wildlife corridor. Across the kind of open space terrain, you can see a lot of wildlife tracks. And it seems to be a pretty heavily used open space for various animals. So it's really important we kind of reached some kind of agreement about how to mitigate the architectural design of this project. On the second page is a survey. And you can see in that survey, I've outlined a 15-foot, 15-foot... I've outlined a 15-feet, 15-foot-wide green corridor that kind of wraps around this large hill. It's a pretty sheer-faced hill that then the parcel is set against. And so in the initial discussions, we'd asked that the building be pushed back 10 feet to give some buffer, kind of a buffered zone against the wildlife corridor and the architecture. The architecture is also, it's, there's some retaining walls in the landscape, there's lighting, there's some guardrails, and all these things were sort of stopping the flow of potential wildlife. The building itself has lighting elements, it has hardscape, and so we thought that pushing it back may be the best sort of option. But in speaking with Mr. Malikian, you know, that's a cost issue, that's a difficult proposition, I think, to swallow. And so we've compromised on that. And you'll see in the third page, sort of a series of drawings, or notes, rather, of things we're proposing to remove for the project. We're relocating some retaining walls in the green space, again, showing that overlay of the wildlife corridor, relocating some retaining walls, reducing and removing some retaining walls here in the red kind of portion, and also eliminating some guardrails. And we think that kind of compromised, or that kind of compromised mitigation measure will be sufficient for allowing some wildlife through the project. Of course, we'd love to see more buffer zone, but we realize this also is an issue with architectural design. There's a cost, there's a number to that, and we want to be reasonable coming to the table. And the sort of other pages, these are more just kind of notes of our design conversations and coordination exercises. But in the last eight-and-a-half-by-elevens, this was Mr. Malikian's response. These were very quick. We've been kind of working rapidly over the last week, just hashing out some ideas. But there's a plan there, there's kind of a resolution of what we'd like to see. And this is really a kind of a reduction of all the retaining walls, and a 3D model was generated by his office, and also showing a more open kind of entrance to the project, and again, allowing that wildlife corridor to kind of flow through the space. You know, the question with all this, of course, is, okay, now or at this point, we have this great design, we've come to the table, and we've hashed it out. Where do we go from here? Because there's no long-term, you know, zoning code, nothing's been established for wildlife corridors by Glendale, how does this then transform into a long-term proposal for the future of that corridor and that piece of property? And so at this point, we have a good faith agreement, and we have a handshake on this proposed design. And so the question is, now, where do we go from here? It goes up to planning and then building and safety. But where does AFC stand in the sort of conversation of ensuring that these elements last through that process when you have bringing on civil engineers, SOAS engineers, and the design is still morphing and changing and coordinating? And then, of course, the inhabitants, right? Someone inhabits this house, they might decide, I really love, you know, a deep hedge right in this area, or I want to put up a gate. So how do you, how do you control those measures? And that's something we've been sort of wrestling around with and discussing with Mr. Malikian, because we obviously don't have much control over that process. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions?
I just want to commend both sides for coming to the table in good faith. Obviously, council took a chance in kind of departing from this process to give you that time, and it's a testament to both sides, but particularly to Mr. Malikian and his skills as an architect and his decades of work in the city for being flexible. It shouldn't be a surprise to anyone about, you know, how high in regard he's held because of the work that he does. So thank you to both sides.
Yeah. These are your designs or Mr. Malikian's designs? The 11-by-17s that we have?
The 11-by-17s are Mr. Malikian's, and then I've just notated them, asking for certain mitigation measures.
Because these are, okay, I'll ask Mr. Malikian there when it comes up.
Yeah, I mean, part of, also the document, one thing I didn't go over is kind of the front page, eight-and-a-half-by-11. And these are the things we've sort of asked for. Starting with number one, which is reducing retaining walls as shown in the project plans, no more than 12 inches, excluding retaining walls along the property line. Number two is applicants shall remove the back retaining walls, guardrails, and court on northeast corner of the project as shown in the conceptual plans. Number three is applicants shall not include wall-mounted lighting and shall use only downward-facing, low-level lighting on the front main entry porch and entrance walkway. Timer shall be used to ensure darkness, no motion sensor lighting along the corridor. Applicants shall be limited to installing only native landscaping for the project alongside the entrance pathway. Number five is applicants shall not install any lighting oriented towards the wildlife corridor on the north end of the property or towards the adjacent city open space. And number six, applicants shall not construct any impediments, including fencing barriers, planted hedges, or walls within the denoted 15-foot wildlife corridor running length of property adjacent to the property line on the north end of the property, other than shown on the project plans. So this is sort of a way for us to memorialize this with the council in hopes that it maintains through the process. Thank you.
And is Mr. Malikian's client open to these suggestions? Are these modifications?
Yeah.
Mr. Malikian would have to answer that. Thank you.
I know you're the architect, Mr. Malikian, but it's not the house you're going to live in, so.
Good evening. My name is Alan Malikian, the project architect. As Mr. Knight mentioned, and we've been having several meetings and communication with emails, exchange with AFC, and I think we've come to an agreement. Initial concept that they were proposing, we were completely against moving the building back. It was a, it was a very nice collaboration, Mr. Knight and I. We've agreed, and as professionals, two professionals talking, and coming up with options. And initially, I wanted to understand what the issues were, not just moving the building. So as, after meeting and discussing some options, obviously, animals don't see property lines and boundaries. So we were able to eliminate certain walls and certain areas that we've kind of blending, actually, you can see it on the last eight-and-a-half-by-11 renderings, that we blend in the landscape with the hillside. And the explanation of the terrain that we have against the property and the distance from the building allowed us to understand better what we can and cannot do. We've altered and massaged the front entry portion as you enter into the property and progression to the house. And we've managed to come up with a retaining wall along the property line and then essentially sloping that back down. Zoning has restrictions, obviously. I don't want to go through a variance or any kind of a special approval process. So everything I've done in the last pages meets all the zoning codes, 3-foot maximum retaining wall on the property line, and then a 2-to-1 slope, a very shallow slope, all the way to the retaining condition that we have along the driveway. And that allows an open 15-foot-wide section that goes up. The way that we eliminated the retaining walls, we've, essentially, we have a gradual grade going up and then coming down again. A little bit inconvenient, but my client, I've communicated every step of the way with my client. He's anxiously waiting for over a year for this day. He wants to get this thing done. He's accepting all the conditions that it was placed, the elimination of the lights along the front. We'll have a one or two lights, up light or down light. We'll look at some options there to kind of, you know, maybe step lights or something, I don't know. Some, enough that it will be, you know, conscious of what the conditions are. As far as the retaining walls and any other items that it was mentioned here, native landscaping, as long as it meets the fire code, absolutely, we'll put in any kind of a landscaping we need to do. I don't see any reason we need to put any trees or anything there. As far as the gate, again, I've expressed the condition to my client. He's concerned, but he agrees that, he said, I'd rather get the project going rather than stop and make an issue for the gate. At this moment, he is in agreement with us.
Where do we go from here?
Comment, any other questions for Mr. Malikian?
No, if they already, Smitten, agreed on the terms. So are these terms shared with the planning department? So they know what the terms are and what to, what we're approving? Because I don't know what I'm approving, because I don't have these conditions. I understand that you had a plan in the past, I was okay with it. This was just given to us, so I want to make sure they know what the conditions are.
Essentially, what we've done is we've eliminated any, any kind of a retaining condition in between the property line and the driveway to minimize the amount of, you know, any kind of a blockage. That's, pretty much, that's the big picture. So, and that's what we've done. We've eliminated the flat or courtyard or in front of the living room, that section, that section is continuation of the corridor. That goes on, and we leave it as natural grade as much possible, and we've created a passageway from the front porch all the way to go around. And that's, that's the change in that sense, as far as the design. Other than that, I promise that I will be in touch with Mr. Knight, and I will be keeping in the loop as for, as soon as we get the SOAS report and the civil, just to have them a copy of what we are going to be submitting in. So I'm saying it in public, so it will happen.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Proton, I, yeah, my only comment, our comment is there's a couple of things we would need to tighten here and to include into the conditions. So the council can certainly close the hearing and direct, if you're satisfied with this, and direct us to, because there's references to plans that are not actually in this document, for example. So it needs to be very specific. But if I'm hearing from Mr. Malikian, he's generally okay with this, you can direct us to incorporate these into the conditions of approval that are already part of the statement of decision. And you can close the public hearing and direct us to bring it back. We could even bring it back on a consent calendar item, or if that's a council's desire.
Mr. Malikian, you have these conditions, and you're okay with it?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, yeah.
Okay.
We do have two callers and a card on this item.
We do, okay. So, okay, Mr. Malikian, thank you. And again, I want to say the same thing that Mr. Kasakian just said. Really appreciate both sides being, you know, professional and collaborative.
Yeah, if only all our appeals were like this.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we have, okay, one card and two callers. Yeah, and let me just ask for comments to be focused on kind of the issues that are in front of us right now, which are some of these conditions that have been agreed by both parties.
The first, the first public comment is by Glendalian.
So I was just going to oppose the project in general. Is that germane to this meeting, like you said, Councilmember Brotman?
Opposing the project, I would say so. I think really what we're talking about are these conditions of approval, but what do you...
Correct, I mean, I think the speaker spoke at the last hearing, if I'm not correct, so he has that opportunity to address the council on that point.
All right, I don't like it, that's all. Good night.
Okay, we have two callers. The first caller is Tim Martinez. Tim, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Good evening, councilmembers. Tim Martinez, Arroyos and Foothills Conservancy. I'll keep this brief. I just wanted to say that we are very pleased that since the continuance granted at the last meeting, that the architect we retained, Mr. Knight, worked so well and collaboratively with Mr. Malikian to address our concerns regarding the wildlife corridor. So we're very grateful for that. I was just going to also call and respectfully request that the conditions that you discussed be incorporated as conditions for approval. And as was mentioned, we do have some lingering concerns about the ongoing challenge of ensuring long-term compliance in the future or by future owners, but definitely believe that these conditions are a significant step in protecting this vital wildlife corridor, and so thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next and final caller is Ms. Valentine. Ms. Valentine, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Okay. I'm glad to see Mr. Malikian. I know him, he's been for many, many years. He's very kind and very intelligent and good, I mean, with wonderful manners. So he's a good person, but I was shocked when I heard that the wildlife jumps over retaining walls, 6-foot tall. I was shocked that the fire department did not know that they had wildlife in the hillsides of Glendale. Obnoxious, obnoxious thinking, ignoring. It's all on the books. City has it on the books. As I remember, I had to get a permit if I wanted to put a chicken wire fence or a chain link fence anywhere on the hillside. It would damage, it would hurt the animals. There is a big ecosystem. I don't want bobcats or disappear so that the rats can take over. What happened to that film star? He is probably, I don't want to be gross, but this is what would happen if the ecosystem is disturbed and the fire department needs to wake up. They need to see that we have oak trees and we have wildlife. And I think Los Angeles County, State of California protects those creatures, and they need to have that. And Arroyo's Foothill Conservancy needs to be on the books. Just, Mr. Mal, I'm surprised that there's nobody around. At the Designer Review Board, I heard there were people absent. We have three people sitting here now, and I apologize. I was not prepared to speak. This, Tony Martinez did a very good job in this short time. I thought it was just yesterday that he got the chance to talk to Mr. Malikian, but they have to, I'm not going to say anything, I'm not building. I know the architect is very good, and he, but he has forgotten that there is wildlife corridors that they need to be protected or left open. So I appreciate it. I'm sorry, forgive me my accent. I don't know, did I speak Russian or German or English? Okay, thank you, good night.
Thank you, and that is all.
Okay, so we'll close the hearing at 10:09 PM. Can I, I want to ask staff a couple of things. One, do these, can you work with these conditions? Or what do you need from us on them? That's number one. And number two, I do want to hear about this point that was made, you know, how do we make sure that these kind of live, you know, beyond just the construction of this property, you know, to maybe future use, changes to lighting, changes to landscaping, and even a future owner of this property? I don't know how that works.
We'll need to take a look and make sure, and I trust Mr. Malikian over there that this will, excuse me, fit into our zoning code. We'll still need to review, obviously, to make sure. But I believe that if you reference this document here in the front as the conditions, we could work towards that. As how this applies going forward, I'd actually probably turn to our city attorney, Mr. Garcia, on how that could be leveraged, any potential changes there. Conditions of approval, so they are enforceable to a certain extent.
Correct, and there's no limitation on the conditions of approval, correct? I mean, there's no time, they're not...
No, they don't, they wouldn't expire with this project at a certain point. Now, if the property were to be redeveloped, it would not carry forward with a new project.
Correct, but as long as this project is the project that's on that property, and those conditions, as long as they pertain to the actual development, they would remain in place. At least, that's the way we look at it. I would, again, as I noted, my recommendation would be to direct us to prepare a motion to sustain the Designer Board's decision to approve the project with conditions, adding the additional six conditions submitted by the appellant's architect. the additional six conditions submitted by the appellant's architect, and then direct us to revise those conditions to have sufficient clarity and then bring that back to you. And again, because the hearing's closed, we can certainly bring that back. It won't need to be part of the hearing. You've already, you've basically decided it, but we want those conditions to be final, have a final statement of decision.
All right, so moved, as stated by the city attorney.
Second.
Okay, no further comments, no questions?
And bring it back at the earliest possible meeting that we can have it. And remind those council members who weren't part of it, if it is on consent, that they need to recuse themselves. Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Brotman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian? And Mayor Asajarian.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. And is the mayor in the back? Is she cutting in?
I thought I saw her leave.
She left? Okay.
You're done, Mr. Malikiyan. I know it looks painless, but it's...
Okay. In that case, what is our next item?
Next is oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Counsel may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. We currently have one card on this item. Beth Brooks.
Hi.
You have five minutes.
You're not coming back in? Oh, so she actually left?
She's right behind you.
She's my favorite. No, she is, sorry. She's my favorite. Okay, thank you. Yeah, this is about the survey, which I didn't even know about, but I ended up getting an email to take part in the survey. And I have called the city manager's office, as you might know. And I actually spoke to the senior VP at the opinion research company who's, who made the survey, who was very, very helpful. And I had a couple of questions. First of all, you know, I am going to ask a public records request to see how much it costs, but, I mean, you're looking for, there are about 100,000 registered voters, because he said that you're getting lists of registered voters. You only want 800 completed responses, which usually something like this, you get about a 20% response rate. So you would have had to reach out to 4,000 people, let's say, to get this response rate, to get the 800. There are a lot of people I know who want to take part in this survey, but they're not going to be called. You're not advertising it on any of your social media, as far as I could see. It's not on the, it's right? It's not being advertised? Or is it being advertised? I'm just not seeing it. No, it's not. And it should be, because you're actually, why shouldn't it be? Well, anyway, I think it should be. I think you should have done that first, before you hired somebody out to do it. So at least you would get those responses for free. And I know you want to match whatever the voter rolls are, but as far as your demographics, what I saw was very glaring, was you didn't ask income. And even if you have a large bucket of income, because even in the census, it's like, you know, under 50,000, 50 to 100, 100 to 200, over 200, you didn't ask anything about income. And you know my big thing is about affordable housing. If you're going to ask a question about affordability of housing and you don't even ask income, it was shocking to me. And you know I have a history in marketing research. That was absolutely astounding to me. And I asked him directly, I said, did somebody directly tell you not to ask income? And he said, there was not a conversation about that, but I get the feeling that that was, that couldn't have been an oversight. I mean, that's a glaring omission. And it cannot be, well, people don't like to answer income. I understand that, but something so broad as that, you would have gotten a response. And that's a huge, huge problem. And the reason I say that it should, you should have started out being advertised on the social media, because the questions in the survey ask people the frequency of visiting the website of Instagram, Facebook for the city departments, for the city of Glendale. So you're basically asking those questions, yet you're not utilizing that to get responses. It doesn't even, it's mind-boggling to me that you would even do that, that you should have started with that first to even, you'd get a better read of people utilizing social media and your outreach by seeing what the responses would be to those surveys. Maybe you've done that in the past. I find it's very, very lacking, your outreach. And it's kind of all over the place. It's like this department has a Facebook page, and that department has a Facebook page, and stuff is over here on the website. So it's a little kind of all over the place. So that's my question about that. And I want to know how actionable this is going to be, because my biggest qualm about the city council and probably about most city councils, I only know, you know, my experience with you guys, is that I don't see that you are, you see your roles as problem solvers or that you should address the issues and the problems of the city. I see you as the people who open up, see the cash, and they go, you get this, and you get that, and you get that, and you get that. So you basically apportion out the money, but I don't see that you always make a connection to, we need to solve this problem, as opposed to, yeah, let's throw money over here because we have a long-term goal of this, this, and that. But that doesn't make sense to me. I think that that's what's really lacking here. Not that you don't care, but that's what I think this city council has become, as most city councils, I believe, have become then. It's just write the check. We're a check-writing body. We're not a problem-solving body. We're a check-writing body. When I hear you guys say, oh, we asked the city for 27 million for Rock Haven, we asked the state, excuse me, the state for 27 million. Did you ask the state for 27 million for people who can't afford their rent? Good, because I'd like to know that. I would really like to know that, because I don't hear about that. I don't hear about, like, I only heard about the Housing Affordability Trust Fund that was news to me that you guys never told me about. So that's basically what I have to say. Thank you.
Ms. Brooks? This item was addressed in the beginning of the meeting. I had asked Mr. Galanian to speak to it, because some residents had reached out. This is not a regular survey. This is a scientific survey, more like a poll.
No, I know, I know. I know what a poll is, yeah.
And that is why it is not being publicized on social media and all the other platforms that you mentioned. But I'm happy to have that conversation with you after the meeting.
Right, because that doesn't make it a scientific study to have it advertised like that, actually.
Thank you.
Our next public comment is by Francesca Smith. Francesca, you're on air, you have five minutes.
Hi, thanks very much. Good evening. My name's Francesca Smith. Believe it or not, I'm calling to collaborate and be constructive, not complain this evening. I'm calling regarding a project that's coming to DRB on Thursday. It will be 117 through 121 East Fairview Avenue. It's an affordable housing project. It's obviously a density bonus project. Unfortunately, it would demolish a 1911 through 1924 bungalow court. The bungalow court is intact. It's craftsman style. It would be the oldest bungalow court in Glendale if it were considered eligible. There are about, I think, 16 in South Glendale that were identified in the survey. None of them date that early, and none of them are this intact. I went on Sunday to take a look at it and was shocked. The place is kind of preserved in amber. A consultant reviewed this property in 1922. You will recognize her name. It's Carrie Chastain. You will recognize it from the Glendale Garden Homes project. When Ms. Chastain said that the property was colonial revival in style and that it wasn't symmetrical, so it couldn't possibly be historic, that city staff and you all, I think, weren't buying that. In this case, I don't believe that this evaluation should be either. The first known owner of this property was Eugene Sanders, and he worked for the Chamber of Commerce in Glendale. And it was he who came up with the America's fastest-growing city, saying, I think, an earlier pamphlet had been done by a notable person, but his, it was under his leadership that the city grew the most during the 1920s. His widow lived there until 1967, when she died at the age of 99. I'm imploring you all to speak to staff regarding this item, hopefully being continued in light of the fact that the evaluation for historic significance, historic significance shouldn't be relied on. It has a lot of the same problems that the Glendale Garden Homes peer review did, including saying, just, I'd rather not enumerate. They're pretty egregious. So it's 120, sorry, 117 through 121 East Fairview Avenue, and it's a beautiful intact bungalow court. And as I said, it will be the oldest one in Glendale to be considered and should be a shoo-in. I appreciate it. I'll be talking to staff in the next couple of days, and I hope that this item might be continued for this reason. Thanks very much. I know you can't answer any questions. Good night.
Thank you, and that was the last comment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.